Wishing to address the governing board or to complete a public participation point and provide it to the governing board executive assistant. This is all part to start before the meeting. We have almost... We're getting there. If anybody needs a copy of the agenda, is it out there? Okay, we're gonna start opening items called to order. I'd like to call the Apache Junction Unified School District's governing board's May 25th work session to order. And we'll start with roll call attendance. Ms. Garcia, present. Mr. Bowers?
Present.
Ms. Conley, present. Mr. Concio?
Present.
Non-present. All board members are in attendance. Please staff for the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Concio, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. Okay, we'll start with the agenda. Dom sent the agenda. Any questions or discussion on the agenda? Would somebody like to make a motion on the agenda? Secretary President like to make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Make a motion. Mr. Concio seconds. Ms. Garcia, yes. Mr. Bowers?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Mr. Concio?
Yes.
Non-present, yes. That motion passes by to zero. We're gonna move on to current events. Public comments, none. Information and discussion items. Item 3.1, Apache Junction City Manager, Brian Powell, presentation. Welcome, Mr. Powell.
Thank you. Okay, the standard come out of this question?
Yeah.
Good afternoon. Thank you for this opportunity. Really actually excited. This is one of those fun discussions we get to have about, future, right? And I know that each one of you participate in the future, right? Where, when you're talking kindergartners, they're our future. And my future, I have a sophomore here. She's my future. And she's my legacy. And I just wanna say thank you for all you do to support my legacy and my children who have benefited from the great work that's done by this board for many years. I have a junior at Utah State who is excelling in college. I have a freshman at NAU who just graduated last year who's dean's list. And I have a sophomore who's doing great, who, is doing great too. So we're hoping she just keeps cranking on too. But I don't want it to go unknown that this, the work from what you do means a lot to me and it means a lot to our family. You know, I want you to know what I feel about that situation. And I'm grateful for it. So, thank you. Today I was asked to present a little bit about some work that's been going on in the city. For me, for 20 years, actually, the city of Apache Junction has set aside what's called a general plan or a master plan, which is their goals and objectives, even way before that, of what their hopes and dreams are, of the type of development, the quality of development, both commercial and residential in this area. Our city was incorporated in 1978. And in terms of cities, that's young. We have a sewer that was done and completed in 1996. And I was young, that's young. Mesa's been doing this for 100 years. So some of our competition's tough and we've learned so much for them. But in Penalt County and in our area, we feel like there's a time and place in which we have a great opportunity to put our unique stamp of development in Penalt County. And so, they have set aside the area to the south of Apache Junction, which is what I'll say pretty much south of US 60. Is their future planning area for master plans and all types of type of growth. And what this map does is it shows land ownership. So, for those who are familiar, there's kinda like a Y, kind of in the middle. I call that the junction of Apache Junction. I'm from Safford and everybody says, well, you represent Apache Junction. I have for 20 years. And when I go into Phoenix, they'll say, you're in Apache Junction. That's way out there. And I said, well, actually, no, I'm from Safford. That's way out there. Well, I used to grow up, think we arrived in Apache Junction. I got a Circle K for once, you know? We used to drive the old road, the old West Highway. Come in and hit the Y and then go down until we went to Power Road. And then we went back down. And then we went in. Well, around 1991, 92, US 60 came across and it changed a lot of the dynamic in our city. Our city council continues to work very hard trying to do all they can to reinvest. And we hope in time, as you come across the county lineup by Apache Trail, that you'll see a difference, a distinction. Our roads, we're hoping, will look distinct as you come into Meridian Road. The district, it's the district area too. It's right in Meridian Road. You become what I call an Apache Junction Unified School District. You become the Superstition Fire Medical District and you become Apache Junction citizen. A citizen in that you pay taxes. Those folks that live there will be paying taxes in this area. And so, we want a distinction. We want it to set apart. So, the other area, so most of this land that you see there is blue, or a lot of it's blue. And that blue means state land. The state land department owns a significant amount of land. And it goes all the way down. I'm gonna show you that here in a little bit. The yellow is BLM land. And you ask why? Well, I can't say I know the answer to that. But I know that the reason it's there is because in 1912, when we became a state, many of the western states could not, the federal government could not manage all the land. So you see the grain up there where the Superstition Mountain Wilderness Area is, that's federal land. BLM is federal land. And if you are out in the western states, they dedicated or gave to the states, state land for the purpose of selling someday, the purpose to sell, not to preserve, but to sell, for underwriting of K through 12 mostly, but also a lot of other beneficiaries. And since I've been here, there's been a lot of interest in growing or buying that land. However, for developers, it's very difficult to purchase state land. It's much more difficult than purchasing private land. So if you think about Santan Valley or you think about these other areas, those are privately held farms that people have owned and they can sell those very quickly. So let's go to the next slide. There might be a PDF. We'll zoom in a little bit here. So this is what I call our asset map. This shows where we have our schools. You see right there, probably the top middle is Fort Peets. CAC, the city area. If you scroll down a little bit more, then you'll see Apache Junction Unified District area where the high school and junior high are. And then if you keep scrolling down, you'll see again this predominance that's in the city limits to Elliott Road right there. 12 square miles that the city has had in its boundaries now, since I've been here for 20 years. The crosshatch lines right there is right off Tomahawk. There's a landfill you may be aware of. And then further south to the west is the CAP canal. And that's this wastewater treatment plant right there. Okay, so let's go to the next slide. This is a fun slide because this shows the Apache Junction Unified School District boundaries. It's much bigger than the city boundary. So the city boundaries to the left proportionally. AJUSD actually has a really unique thing that I wanted to bring up with this map. In that if you look to the very southwest part or the bottom left part of this map, you'll see what's called the 24. Do you guys know where the 24 is at? So you come off Phoenix Mesa Gate, when you go east, as that road finishes, if you go down to Santan Valley right now, right at that area, that's where the folks from Tantan will be coming north and going. For those that work in public safety, we almost have an accident every other day now at Ironwood and Baseline in our city. And from a public safety standpoint, it can't, this road cannot come fast enough. People are getting hurt. And we're really excited for folks to be able to get into there. Well, what else has happened for your boundaries in terms of district revenue? In terms of property tax revenue. The city doesn't have a city property tax, but the school district does and it's part of our base. It's important. Same with the fire district. You'll see about a half a mile, doesn't look like half a mile, but down there where, yeah, who's got the scroll though? Yeah, and go down further southwest for me. Keep going. That, keep going left. Right there where the 24 is, your boundaries are actually gonna be below the 24. So why does that matter? The reason that matters is that Queen Creek and the city of Apache Junction, many years ago, decided that the 24 was gonna be our dividing line. In other words, the north side of the 24 is gonna be city of AJ and the south side will be 24. And the type of development around there, whatever that comes, no matter what, if it's the town of Queen Creek or city of AJ, when it comes in your boundaries, you'll get the tax revenue. So forever, and for those that are in administration, we need to make sure Penalt County remembers this. So that, because they are actually developing probably sooner down there than even us as a city. The town of Queen Creek is developing much quicker. Their infrastructure is a little bit more developed than ours and they're a little bit ahead of the game. So if something comes in and that area is just north of Pecos and the Germaine area and is south of the 24, then we wanna make sure that the county recognizes that area is Apache Junction Unified School District. Okay, next slide. So I just wanted to show growth over time. Just these dots represent the East Valley and you'll see the Arizona State Land Trust. See how big that is? When we became a state in 1912, all that area is owned by the state land. And then Santan Valley is all the white area. And then Queen Creek. Now hit the next slide. These dots represent growth. So what happened between basically 2005 and now, and it's happening now, is like a wave. The infrastructure wave hit Apache Junction state land and then bounced over us. Hence you have 130,000, 140,000 people that live in the Santan Valley that go to Florence Unified, which I think is post Intview High School. You have folks who live in Combs Unified that goes to Combs High School. And then you have a Santan Valley High School down there. And it's just growing, growing, growing. But you'll notice what's not growing, even in the Gold Canyon area and Apache Junction, which had tremendous growth, is the area of the state land. And so, about three years ago, a group that developed Eastmark started interacting with the state land department and started interacting with the city. And they said, hey, we wanna start figuring out the process to be able to get this Arizona state land to sell. And last November, it finally happened. There was an auction. And I don't know if you followed all that, but last November, four square miles, and I'll show you exactly where that was at, went up for auction, south of Elliott, east of Meridian, to Ironwood, to Idaho. That was started at $68 million and it ended up being sold for $245 million. And a group called DR Horton and Brookfield purchased it. And they purchased the land. And it's actually kind of this process in which they're working with us and the state land to annex it. And I'll get into specific dates here pretty soon. And to be able to rezone it. And to be able to then get it into private lands, which takes it off of the government and puts it into private holdings that then becomes taxable. So let's go to the next map. Okay. So here's zoomed in on that area. The 24 is a predominant southern boundary for Apache Junction. And it's, those lines are still really wide and ADOT and federal highway commissioners are still trying to figure out. But the line to Ironwood is not a wide swath anymore. It's almost done. I, you know, I would say maybe by the end of the year. They're moving so fast.
I've seen the...
You've seen, you probably...
Yeah, I drove down Ironwood and I've seen the actual opening. So it's like it's any day now, you're gonna be able to drive on it.
Yeah, it's pretty amazing. And it is neat because when you can get some of these lines down before the development comes, it's way, way less expensive for the taxpayer. The contractor can move so much faster and it could be a really high-quality transportation system. So that north-south freeway, back about three years ago, the folks in Penalt County voted yes on a half-cent sales tax for transportation across the county. And the park that's in the Apache Junction Gold Canyon area is this reliever called, I kinda call it, you know how you have the 101, the 202, the 303? Well, this is kinda like our 303 or a 404 or whatever. It's gonna go from AJ all the way to Coolidge. And it is a huge, huge number of the 600 million that could be spent on that tax over the next 20 years. That road alone is gonna be like almost half of it. And they don't know yet exactly where that'll go. And the last caveat on the north-south freeway is it is, it's being held in litigation. I don't know if you guys know that. But the Goldwater Institute sued and said that we didn't really know what we were voting on. And so it went to the state level and it went to appellate level and it's now in the Arizona Supreme Court on whether or not that tax was a legitimate, I guess that's the best way to say it, legitimate tax. And so now, we will wait and see here pretty soon. We keep hearing it any month now that they'll say, it's a go. Penalt County is the group, the Penalt County is holding on to the revenue. They've already collected over $60 million in the last three years. And so a half-cent sales tax is going into that. And there's a bunch of roads. That's a whole nother discussion on where they go across the county. But for us today, I was asked to really highlight the timing around the darker blue area. So that's what's called the state land auction area for four square miles. Elliott on the north side, Warner, Ray, Meridian, Ironwood, Idaho. That's what's being, that is purchased. What's being annexed, though, is a much greater area. It's called the retained property or the annexation area that could be sold later. But the park that was sold is a square. But we've worked really hard to work with the city of Mesa for 20 years to agree. Mesa, Meridian's it. Beta complete. We love ya, but this is where we want, where we can work together on. Queen Creek, come to the 24. Both of them are great partners. And then the annexation area will go all the way to the Cap Canal. And then of course, aspirationally, if you ask me what the mayor and council are thinking of going east, is that someday we would end all the way to the 60 some point. And that's our general plan. But that's not, that's not defined, but it's our hopes and dreams that that area sometime we would be able to do. And of course, it's all in your district. It's already, that's already been decided. So, timing. This summer is the time in which we finalize the annexation. Actually, to annex state land, you have to have a blessing first, the way I describe it. The state land commissioner, the treasurer and the governor have to meet. And they have to say, hey, we're gonna allow for you, city of AJ, to annex us. They did that actually like a year and a half ago. And it just takes so much time. That's part of the why the developers don't really like dealing this because it's a lot of risk. And so DR Horton is working with us now. And we will be bringing to city council this final annexation of this whole area. And then once the rezoning happens, which will happen this summer, because when we annex, we take in the current zoning of the county. The county zoning there is general rule. And that's not, you know, we need to make sure we rezone it. And so it's being rezoned to master plan community designation, which is the ability for there to be some flexibility over it because it's so big. 20 years it could take to develop that. Mostly residential at first with some commercial. If you're familiar with Verrato, if you're familiar with Nostancia, or if you're familiar with Eastmark, that's the type of development they're gonna wanna to bring. And we would just connect right into the major system of Elliott, Warner and Ray. And then they would utilize some of the existing infrastructure of Ironwood. Fortunately, for many years, Apache Junction City's been working very hard to provide water and wastewater services. And so we're like, we're super excited and ready to do that infrastructure. In terms of stormwater, anything west of the canal is really easy to deal with. So it's not the same as dealing with some of the stormwater we have up near the mountain, which is, presents some different type of drainage issues. So, I think that's exactly what, you know, I wanted to answer any questions. I just wanted to know about timing, where exactly this is at. We anticipate DR Horton would, once they get their rezoning, they're gonna be so eager to get going. You know, I've been telling everybody the first quarter, well, homes, we'll see actually homes go up in the first quarter of 2023. For them to get all the water, all the sewer, all the horizontal, and it'll take a long time. But this summer would be the time to do the rezoning and do the, all the, what I call the rezoning and the master plan community designation. And then it's gonna, once they have that, then they can start working on preliminary plots, final plots, bring those to city council and then it'll take a year to do that. So for your planning purposes, that's really important in terms of your, you know, kinda thinking about schools and potential for that. And, you know, very soon we can introduce you. If you've already met, maybe someone hopes to hear.
They had a webinar with me.
Did they? Good.
Yeah, they were really nice.
Who did you, who did you get to meet? Patrick and John Bradley, Karen?
Yeah, there was like six or seven people, I think.
Yeah, so Karen Taylor Robson, she's running for governor. She's been representing the folks at Brookfield, which is, it's a joint venture between DR Horton and Brookfield. So you may hear both names. DR Horton is a home builder. That's all they do. Brookfield is a master developer. They like to do what you call, they like, they're in the business of like putting in the roads, the sewer and then creating value. And then like in Eastmark, if you'll notice, there's like a section for Taylor Morrison or a section for Shea or a section for Poolete. That's how some of it'll be. And then the other piece will be just DR Horton, but different types of DR Horton homes. But there's areas set aside for commercial. There'll be areas, but they need to take some time to develop before that area comes. Even here, yesterday, everybody in the world's asking me, what's coming, Bryant? Right? Well, nothing's coming. The reality is, is a private property owner has decided that they wanna tear down land or tear down a building so they can reduce their taxes. And also to make their land maybe more sellable. And the city government just zones land. We don't, we don't get to decide what the commercial user might be. And in fact, there's so much demand for housing and some of these areas are so big behind here. The world of Amazon, the world of retail has changed significantly. And because we don't have a property tax, to us at the city, we don't, we really do wanna get retail. We want commercial. Helps us pay the bills. However, as more and more folks are using Amazon and more and more folks can designate that geography, I live in the city. One day, I mean, I can't believe what Amazon will send ya. I really wanted to go get some poison, roundup. And I forgot. So I got on Sunday night, ordered it. Instead of having to go out of town or maybe go get something like that out of town, you can still get in town. But I ordered it online, two days later it came in and sure enough, there was the sales tax. It's connecting. And so, the need for what we call Euclidean zoning, like you've seen all over the valley. Euclidean zoning is a term for planners that means you do residential here, you put on the corners of major intersection, commercial. It's changing. It's not in 1980s, not 2000s anymore. It's changing. And so, the idea of giving some commercial up to have some residential lower, if you've seen the cost of housing, we need to add some supply. Well, guess what? Those people will buy online and we'll be able to provide our basic services through some of that revenue.
I'll tell you one thing that we could do out here.
Yeah.
Some stuff from back east. There's a nice bakery on the corner somewhere.
Get a bakery? I'll put it down, Dana. We'll go get it. Costco, well Costco's huge. Costco'd be wonderful. We actually have, you know, so you guys have the land that goes all the way here to San Marcos? And just, I believe this was state land at one point. I'm not sure 100%. If you keep going east, all the land to Idaho is state land. You know where they have that putt-putt golf course? It's all state land. Yeah, so you can see it on this map. So Ironwood, can you follow Ironwood up? And then where the 60 is, you keep going up to Southern. And it's actually labeled Southern right where your school is. Go east a half mile. That half section is blue. See that? Do you want me to show you guys? I'm gonna get that specific for you. This section's, this section right here is all owned by state land department. It's like 160 acres. And you ever seen the Snake Hole Golf Course sign? Yeah, it's a lease. So the people, the park on the east side of Idaho, lease state land so that they can do it. I call it very exclusive golf course. They won't let you on it. But, you know, it's state land. It's owned by state land department. The many users wanna come with the state land, like any, you know, user, just like these, these folks. They wanna hold on to it till something's really churning. And then that's the place where brought up Costco or Lowe's or Power Center would be really great access to the freeway. Strategically, the council said, yeah, no, we support the state land holding on to that. Let's not make that residential.
So Bryant, you know the part that you talked about, kinda like the Eastmark? So my sister lives in Eastmark and the boys have really been enjoying going down there. There's a little restaurant down there. They've been riding their bikes. The tribe taught me to move them down there, which isn't gonna happen. But I think that our local kids are going down there and they're kinda, they're loving it. So I think like that kind of thought would be really cool to have in our community because it's allowing them, they've got concerts, there's a little restaurant, there's an ice cream. You know, something like that would be really cool closer to our...
Yeah. Why would you have to go down to Signal View and over if you can go on Ironwood? Especially the Brookfield piece. We have great hopes that that's part of the, what we're, you know, community. So the city of Mesa, if you've seen it, you've seen some of the signs there. So they have like a community center there and they have a few restaurants. And then there's like a great park there. Well, there's a couple, a lot of parks. And so they have that restaurant. I actually think it's called Alabarge though.
But I was thinking about that the other day when I went down there. I'm like, this would be great for our kids because they can all, you know, it's just a very casual ride. It's really nice out. They're gonna be getting ice cream.
Yeah, so the idea of the parks that'll be there will be some linear parks that'll be open to the public. They're definitely wanting to do that. And we're pushing it to, for the Parks and Rec staff to be able to, you know, some of the, some of those parks are HOA owned, but they're open to the public. And then some of them are public, public that we maintain and do. We're actually modeling it after Eastmark. The parks.
And then they've got the food trucks coming in. So people are making, you know, their businesses are moving. It's really cool.
At Eastmark, does it have a junior or an elementary school and a high school?
So this might, you all might be able to help me out on. So I know that the Queen Creek Unified is in the city of Mesa, right there, right? And so I think Eastmark High is a Queen Creek Unified High School.
And that is?
And that's in Eastmark. Just barely went.
Do we have to be prepared to build a two-school? Building two-school? If that's what we're thinking about.
So they started with a basis, so there's a grade. So some of those are tough issues, I told...
He was avoiding myself.
Yeah. Let me just go start with what they started with. They started Eastmark almost 20 years ago. 18, 15 years ago, pre-recession. And it started with that grade park area. And then it started with the kind of park. And then as I go north, I wanna say now, there's either two charter schools. One was the basis elementary. And I'm told they gave the Unified School District their first right of refusal. And they've committed to me the same to you. And you may be able to confirm it.
How many homes for DR Horton? Are they looking at building?
So I'm telling everybody 11,000 total. I don't know which ones for each group. Do they say?
I, yeah, it's my other number.
So was it about 11,000 homes?
11,000 homes.
How long will it take for the whole, like, what's the, is that like a 10-year, 15-year thing?
They're planning seven to 10 years. I think if you were to ask Patrick at DR Horton, he wants it done in five. He wants to go, because I know, like, if you, if you guys have seen the Lenar Homes going off their freeway, they can't, they can't make them fast.
It's a lottery. They draw four, they draw four a month.
Yeah, it's like 210 homes you guys are coming into your tax base. You'll see it. I got already invitation Heather to maybe let you all come out there, but it's, it's already got like 36 homes and they've already pulled another 36.
To the Goldfield one?
It's the Lenar Goldfield. Yeah, right off Goldfield and the freeway. And we've got a few others that are popping up, guys. We don't wanna, that's one of my dynamics that I'll have at the city is, how do we blend the communities and make sure we don't lose the identity that we have in the downtown, in our newer neighborhoods and then also in our acre and a quarter lots that we wanna keep that way forever and really be a really stand unique new area of the valley. I always call this the cul-de-sac at the end of the valley. It's just beautiful out there. We won't be able to, we don't have sewer north and east of Ole Miss Highway. It is, it is literally rock. We have the beautiful rock. If you ever tried to do, so it's gonna be very, whenever I talk to folks who get really nervous about this, I say, you know, if you live on Tomahawk and Scenic, very rural area, we have a rural standard there. We're not wanting to be curb gutter sidewalk up there. We don't ask engineering to be done. We, engineering to be done, but we don't bring in sidewalks. I say, how many miles is it to Ellsworth Road and the 202? One, two, these are mile blocks. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Well, if you do the same thing, almost down, one, two, three, four, five, this area is almost six miles. So do you worry what densities are at Ellsworth? So if you want your tax base to grow, if you want the amenities that some of us have talked about, or our city councils have inscribed, I say you want the demand of some of these higher, you know, these type of homes to be down in this area of a, you know, you're talking 100 square miles of a city. They can coexist. We're not saying bring in master plan community up at Tomahawk and Scenic. And nor is that ever gonna be the plan. At least from what I can tell, this community. And we don't have developers wanting to develop. What's that?
That's beautiful about Tomahawk and Scenic.
There are a lot of changes for, you know, folks purchasing land and developing it, but it's all done at the single law level. As far as that communication and planning, if you need me to keep coming back, I'm always a love, love, open book, love to come and talk about where we're at. Anytime, Heather. And feel free to do that. And get you up to speed where we're at in five months, three months. They do wanna work, they do have a perspective of a public good, of the public. And I know we've got some effort, you know, trying to figure out to be the provider of education to that area as well. We all keep, on our end, that's what we keep saying, go talk to Heather, go talk to her, you know, keep going. We all keep, on our end, that's what we keep saying, go talk to Heather, go talk to her, you know, keep going, you know, go.
You had a good meeting with them though.
Yeah, I did.
You gave a lot of good information. Does anybody have any questions on this at all? I'm excited.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, the first one will be Lenar, I, they'll be off today, I just got an email today, and, and folks there, and you can come and see that. It's a, it's, it's amazing to see some of those things happen, just real quick like that.
I just want to thank you for.
Oh, you're welcome, yeah, thanks for, oh, yeah, for sure.
Supporters, I appreciate it. I'm so grateful, and I can say this for all of us, our relationship with the city and.
Okay, yeah, great, great.
So awesome.
Yeah, absolutely, we're so, we're so thankful, and I, you know, the last change on the, the last intergovernmental agreement allowed for us to go in and work on, on the, just behind the skate park and some other areas, we've got some really great ideas also with the tennis. And Liz is doing a remark, but it looks like we may get a grant to be able to help the, so there's an old bathroom there, we need to keep maintaining the skate park. And we appreciate your, your, your patience in helping us, you know, do that kind of amenity and open space, but also, um, those bathrooms are, I want to say thirty, forty years old, and we've had some damage. But also some more amenities to the park and to the tennis court, hopefully, you know, coming close. The next would be the track, and I don't know, I'm working on that.
We'll talk to you.
Yeah.
But we are, we are truly grateful for our relationship with the city, it's a blessing to have you guys work with us.
And I know I send the same sentiment from our city council here, appreciate you, the great work you're doing here.
Really appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Yeah, thank you very much, have a great rest of the day.
No, I just got handouts for everybody. I just wanted to run through, um, these are three of the financial reports that, um, you all get the first meeting every month, in the, in the consent agenda financial report. I just wanted to make sure that we're all on the same page, we're making the most of these. Um, I think sometimes I'm fielding questions here and there that are within these reports, so I feel it's valuable for us to go through these, make sure we're making the most of these, since we're getting them anyways. So, uh, the first one you have there is the fund balances. Now, um, somewhat of a confusing topic, um, as you know, M and O, uh, capital, and then if you look at, um, the classroom site fund, the four of the top five there, those are all budget-controlled funds. So, um, you'll see like that M and O beginning balance, that's beginning of, this is as the beginning of the year until now, or in this case, the end of April, since it's a monthly report, but, uh, I think we did this, we did do this as of May, uh, but it was last week. But the beginning balance there is one point four million, our M and O, uh, budget is nineteen, twenty million. So, the reason that is the way it is, is they don't give us all the money at once, they give us the, they give us that revenue throughout the year. So, this is the difference between what's actually in our account that we can spend from M and O versus what we budget for, we budget for the year. So we have to make sure that we're always not spending, we, it's, it's really tough for some districts who get their revenue twice a year, depending on how it works. If you're getting mostly state aid, you get it every month, so it's not too hard of a topic for us to stay on top of. But some districts really have to manage it, because they can't be ever negative, so they have to get that revenue and really pace it out, kind of like our teachers during the summer when they get their lump sum, right? So, um, for us, that's usually not a huge issue, but that's why you see, you're thinking probably, M and O, that's nineteen, twenty million, well, that's the budgeted amount. That's not actually what we have to spend at any moment. Classroom site fund works the same way. Now, for pretty much all the rest of these, it's just like you would think of with your own bank account. However much we have in the balance is what we have available. And one we talk about a lot on, on the second, or maybe it is on the first page here, but on the bottom of the first page, the five hundred and the five oh one, those two funds, the five hundred, that's revenue we've received from our leases. The five oh one is for sale. So, um, the Gold Canyon sale is a portion, you can see there was that one point six million in the transfers portion. Uh, that is, uh, that two million dollar balance, that's mostly from the sale of that, of that school. Um, but those two, we, we do have that, we do have that money available to use on capital expenditures. You might recall, back in our December revision this year, we did transfer extra money from capital to M and O, with the caveat, we're not cutting anything, we're just gonna spend it from these funds, because we can use capital expenditures on these funds. We didn't actually, we cut the budget of the capital budget, but we didn't cut our expenditure, we didn't change anything we were doing, we just changed how we were coding it. Okay? So, for the most part, then when you hear fund balances on this report, that is exactly what it is. But, um, those top few, those are budgeted controlled, so, you know, we just gotta make sure we're not negative on those. But what you see on the fund balance for the rest of those, that is what we have. So, um, that, that, I just wanted to make sure we were all in agreement, and when you ask how much is in classroom site fund, or sorry, uh, results-based funding, we can see that on this report every month, it's always available to you on, on the monthly report.
That's a question, and the school plan fund, the beginning balance was four thirty-nine, is that including the two hundred thousand dollar deposit from the Gold Canyon sale?
I, that's all wrapped into the one point six, the actual last check we got, is that not correct?
No. The two hundred was the down theme and the one point six is the last theme.
Okay, is that, when, when did the two hundred happen?
So was the deposit that they.
During December.
Okay. I cannot, I don't know off the top of my head.
Well, if you could just check on it.
Yeah, I'll make sure it's in there, but, um.
And then the classroom site fund, that's, this is the three oh one, right?
That is three oh one, yes.
Okay, so those are the three buckets?
They are, but again, that's budget-controlled, so I wouldn't, those balances, we just gotta make sure we're not overspending what's actually in our account in that moment. That's not what we budget, that's not what we'll be receiving for the whole year.
Right, but the balance is like two point three nine?
Uh.
For those.
Yes, but this does not show, like, the, the paper performance hasn't been paid out yet, but yes.
Okay.
That's coming, uh, and that'll probably be on your next one.
Okay.
Because, uh, that's coming one a week, I think that, that gets paid out to the teachers.
So, Dan, before you move on from the school plan piece over there, so you have your beginning balance at the four thirty-nine?
Yes.
So the expenses, is that like insurance and just make, what, what kind of expenses is that?
That is anything we want to code that's a capital purchase. It's a purchase we're purchasing for the district when we say expenses. So, we're earning the money through the lease.
Okay.
And then it's just in our account, now how are we gonna spend, and what, how we're spending it are those expenses. So, um, and one of the things we did was protect, we, we, we cut tech in December from the capital budget. I think it was something around sixty thousand dollars for, um, some kind of server or something they were, they were planning on purchasing. Did we actually purchase the server? Yes, but we purchased it, purchased it out of the school plan lease rather than capital.
So that's, so that beginning balance is money that we've earned from the lease, but then that expense is not expense specifically for the schools, it's just what we're using for other things.
How much we've spent, correct. So, yeah, I just wanted to make sure, since we're getting this, let's, let's, uh, have a conversation and make sure that we're using it to our advantage. Yes, sir?
Okay, I got a question here. Uh, fund three zero one, ROTC?
Yes.
We start out, if I'm, if I'm reading this right, we start out in the hole, right?
Correct.
How do we start out in the hole?
No question.
Um, I asked about that one too, because I'm not too familiar, but my understanding is the, the revenue does come, and now, this is a year, so this is a fair question. How is this a problem? Yes, this is a problem. Um, I don't know too much about how we receive revenue out of that fund, and, and so, I, 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 I was alerted to that as well.
Because we started out in the hole, and then I don't know how we got fifty-nine thousand revenue. And then we had ninety-five thousand spent, and now we have a fund balance of even more in the hole than what we started. I mean, something's not working out, or something's not balancing right, so.
Correct. So what, what happens in that situation is we end up having to supplement with the M and O when that's happening.
But is there like some sort of ROTC budget, like this is how many kids we need for that program?
I don't believe we have, I don't, I'm not sure, I don't want to speak on that, but I, I, I have not, I have not come across.
So we need to find out a breakdown of what's gotten from coin.
Right.
I, I could be wrong, but I was under the impression that Department of the Navy ended up picking up financial obligations that.
I know that's where revenue comes from, I'm not sure, you know, the, the, how that works with reimbursement and, and what they choose to reimburse for and not. Um, but, yeah, certainly, certainly something, you're, you're reading the report correctly, that is exactly a question that should pop up. And it's one I, I saw this morning when I was going through this, and I, I said the same thing.
So does ROTC have a separate fund, like the sports and all that, where?
We're gonna go through those ones soon, so that's a good segue, probably, if that's all right. So, um, auxiliary, I think I gave you next.
Oh, wait, I'll have that one.
Okay, go ahead.
So I just have a question on fund two, I think it's in the middle of the table. What comes out, what kind of expenses come out of that?
I believe, my understanding, and I'm, I'm not a hundred percent confident, but I believe we can spend that on anything we want. The hundred and seventy, uh, what, what do we, what are the expenditures? So, uh, special ed, I, gee, miss Heather, do you?
For, I don't know, I, I would be interested to see what came out of that this year. Typically, if I, if we needed something instead that we, that was a capital expense, we took it out of there. But I don't know what we've spent it on this year, we'd have to go back and look at that.
Yeah, I don't know, because, you know, it's sped, it's sped capital items.
Specific to sped, they can use it for any.
It is specific?
It is not.
It's not.
It's, it's money that's sped generates, but it's not, doesn't have to be specifically spent on that.
Okay, so I'd be curious if it's a lot.
Yeah, that's another big balance that we have.
And then it does look like we have a balance in the results-based funding, because I think.
We do, we do, I would, yeah, that is correct. At one point, I think I ran a wrong date on one of the reports, and that's why that.
But we, we, we don't have a balance, because we have not, we have not paid for all the professional development that was, um, allocated for this summer, earlier in the year.
But as of right now, yes, there's, yeah, we just have plans on how we're gonna do.
And then I think we approved science curriculum.
Correct.
That was supposed to be paid out of this.
Not a, well, it's gonna be no money left.
Well, the board approved it.
Huh?
The board approved the curriculum.
Yeah.
So we have to get. Also, I wanted to know, the civic center and the community is supposed, like, so what expenses, is that just sort of like things for the civic? Like the PAC, those expenditures, like things needed for that building?
Um, I, I'm not sure, to be honest. Um, I believe, but I think it's gonna be similar to as the other ones were timed, I think we can spend that elsewhere.
Right, well, that's like, that's like our cash money coming in.
Right, and generally, that's what we try to do, is keep it where it, you know, and keep it where it came from. But, yeah, it's like, I don't know off the top of my head, how that fifty-eight thousand and that three thousand spent.
Do salaries come out of that, or?
I don't believe so, for.
We can't use that for a salary or something? So I think.
Well, it's, it's, it's just, you hesitate to do that just because it's revenue-based. You, you don't know, you know, like.
Well, because I'm saying years ago, like when I first went on the board six years ago, at that time, there was a mechanic getting a salary out of that account. So I didn't know if that was something or not.
I'm not sure, it, it would be some, if it was, it would be minimal, something like that, yeah. But I can't, no, definitely not the thirty-one hundred, that wouldn't, that wouldn't be enough.
No, the civic center, one of the fifteen.
So, um, and another, just to wrap up, that beginning balance column should always be the same, uh, because it's the beginning of the year. So that, that should always be, that's why I put that date up there, and everything else should change.
Maybe we come up and restrict, unrestricted capital.
Yeah.
It's like one point four.
But again, that's one of your budget controls.
Yeah.
So that doesn't necessarily mean it's ours to spend, even if, even if we are, we are limited to our budget.
So the portion on this, three fifty-three. Taylor grazing funds?
Correct.
Are we raising livestock somewhere?
See that, I, I.
That's like Gold Canyon.
I don't know, you see there's no, um, activity in there?
I know there's no activity, but I mean, it's got money sitting in there.
Yeah, it's, it's from long ago, when I asked that, a long time ago, we got money and it's still there.
But we have some accounts where money has been stagnant in there, is there any ways to move that?
Yeah, we can, I mean, we can spend it.
Well, right, but what is, what is it?
I don't know. I don't know, I don't know how we got.
It's labor, tailor, grazing funds. I thought we were in the education business and not raising livestock.
I don't know, I don't know how we got the revenue.
Maybe they were using our land, and then they gave money back to you because of that. But it was probably their, like, land that we, we owned, and then they were running their cattle on it.
Is there any way to kind of find out?
I can, I can find out how we got that, yeah.
I'm just kind of curious about that, I mean, I, I understand, you know, we've got like twenty-two thousand dollars sitting there, that'd be nice to end up moving it somewhere, or?
Wait, in, in that idea, it's not so much moving it as just spending it and coding something out of it, kind of like we talked about with the server. Just pay for something with that, it's, you know.
Yeah, that's something that, yeah, needs to be looked into.
All right, so if we move on to auxiliary.
Give me some minute, I'm not done.
Auxiliary, where?
A minute, it's, I, I want to know about the Gibson donations, okay? So, our schools were closed for year. How do we spend that amount of money in Gibson donations?
Second page, the back, five thirty, five thirty.
Five thirty, thank you.
I can look at those expenses inside of there.
So that's, that's why I've asked in the past to break down of those donations, just so that we can see where that money is being spent.
Then that is going to be much easier when we have InTouch.
Yes.
Because it's not integrated with our software, it's kind of, uh, in an independent spreadsheet and all that, so it is.
But will that show money going out? I mean, InTouch will show donations coming in.
My understanding is InTouch will be completely incorporate all of these enterprise funds in our, in our vision software, and it'll be showing in real time, just as anything else would.
So then when something comes out of that fund, we'll have a record of it?
Yes.
When is that gonna happen?
Well, I've been working on the, the coding, uh, conversion, I've been going back and forth, and we are close, we are, they are close to accepting my coding, my new codes.
Okay.
And, uh, as soon as that happens, then we can implement InTouch. They, they cannot do InTouch with our old coding software is the problem. And getting that coding software is, you know, it's thousands of codes, so it's trying to get it all right, it's, it's taking me a little bit of time, and gone back and forth, but we are. We, we didn't, for a long time, we didn't even know what, how, how to do it, but it's, the ball's been in my work for a couple of weeks now, so.
Do you think we'll be ready for next year?
I do, I really do.
I hope so.
I really do.
Okay, and then the other question I have is our adjacent ways.
What?
Adjacent ways on.
Six point. It's draining.
So is that money, is that, are we able to use that for parking lots, to feed?
I, I, the way I usually hear it is sidewalks, I'm not sure if parking lots fits into there, but I can find that out.
Yeah, from my understanding is that more adjacent ways, and I don't know if this is sure or not, there could be a tax levy.
There can.
So can you explain that?
I cannot, right now, to be honest, I, I, adjacent ways, I haven't, as you can see, we've, we've got a hundred and four dollars, we haven't spent any.
Yeah.
So it's not something I'm.
So I don't, is that something that, like, a, like a levy, because like.
I believe, yeah, so I think if you're gonna build a, like, uh, and this is how I, this is my basic knowledge of it. Let's say we're gonna build a school somewhere that doesn't have a road to it yet.
Okay.
You can, then you, you need to, how do you get to the school? We need to build a road, and then you can put that on, that burden on the taxpayer to make that happen. Um, that's the extreme example, but.
So it's not something that, like, you can use now, it has to be, it's something in the future?
I'm not sure on that. I, I'm, I'm not, you know, we haven't spent it, so I haven't got any familiarity with it, yet, so.
Because I'm just curious, because I know, like, when the city paid San, uh, San Marcos in front of Pecos Canyon for us, it was like, why didn't we, we were able to use our adjacent ways for that, that's our road, right?
I think adjacent ways is more like an ingress and egress, so like you said, like bringing it to something.
Yeah, it's access, because that's a good way to say it, yes, yes.
But I'm wondering if it is a part of our plans.
We need to work on it. Something, yeah, like we realize that when you were at graduation promotion, it feels like somebody's gonna really fall on her toes. I gotta work on that.
Yeah, but that's kind of our road.
I hear what you're saying.
So like, I don't understand why we can't even get that key.
I, I think it's not taking us anywhere.
We wouldn't do it now until you finish the track.
I'm just saying, but if we have that money that could be used, then we know we have that for that.
And I, I'm not sure on this, but, you know, if we're going from our building to our building, I think it's, the burden's on us, it's kind of how I, I would guess that would. I think it has to connect to, to city, would be the way I would think about that. But I don't know, I.
We should look at that.
I agree.
I just think that it's good to know.
What is J-ten?
That's the, that's CTE, the CTE.
Just leave it, let it over.
That I don't even know, like, we're still, I don't know what that money can be used for.
I, I don't know, I mean, I, I believe, again, most of these I think are pretty, they're, they're enterprise funds, so just like our school. I, I don't know, I mean, I, I believe, again, most of these, I think, are pretty, they're, they're enterprise funds, so just like our school plant funds, we can, and I know the school plant funds are specific to capital, outside of that, I think they're pretty wide open as to how you can do that.
There is the leftover, when we have the program in our building, history, at the high school, and that was the leftover fund that we did not spend.
So it's gonna say there.
So it's ours, it's our money to spend, not going back to J-ten.
But doesn't have to be used for J-ten?
It should be J-ten, yes, should be CTE.
But like, most of our, our classes are already EBIT classes, probably why it's not being spent.
But we're not, we're not, we're not giving it to the EBIT classes, because they're the ones who's funding that, that program.
Exactly.
But we have some things coming up that we're probably gonna use it for, some of it.
Alright, you, um, does anybody else have questions on this one?
This fund six thirty-eight, two million dollar bond issue and straight zeros, what's that all about?
At some point, it must have had an account, and I don't know how, why it was, why it was created, but we don't have anything in it, so.
It should have been close to it.
So it should be, it needs to be eliminated?
Yeah, it's just.
It should have been close to it.
Okay, and then just below it, emergency fund, SFB, is that the school facilities board?
I would assume that that would have something to do with it, the three hundred and fifteen dollars, I have no clue, I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure what that's all about.
Okay. And then we have right below that, six ninety-one, the building renewal grant, that comes from the school facilities board.
I think that's a previous name, and they're kind of intermingled at this point.
Right, but what I'm looking at is we got a thousand, yeah, twelve hundred and forty-five dollars to start out with, and now we're in the whole one hundred and eight thousand.
That, that's our painting share at the high school.
Yeah.
That's the rederization at the high school, that's the share of the district to pay.
So then that, that's what we're on the hook for.
Yeah, we have to pay for that. That's what it is.
We've got a lot of debt.
Will you explain, Dan, the seven hundred, he's talking about the debt service now?
Yeah, uh, that was from the bond that, sometime in the nineties, my understanding, uh, and we're still paying them off.
Eight years?
I don't think we have much to go, do you think?
Uh, there's not too many more years, but it's about three million a year, in total. And I'm not sure, okay, I can't, I'm not sure that any kind of breakup of those as to why, what's what, I know that's the, the sum of it, of all the, we kind of just rolled it up into all the seven hundreds. Alright, so those are district funds. The next one is auxiliary, and you can see how many accounts we have in auxiliary.
Which one are you?
Auxiliary operations. So, um, the total balance on all these, and, and so auxiliary funds, clubs, sports, generally how we think of these. The total balance we have for all of these is six hundred and fifteen thousand, you can see that on the last page. There are a couple that you probably noticed on the second page, about two-thirds of the way down, high school athletics. Isn't, that's a negative, that's negative nine thousand. I believe this is for, like, AIA dues and referees, and, um, so you can see, we, we, not much happened in there this year, but traditionally, we have been in the hole, and MNO has had to help with that fund. So anything in the hole, we have to do that. And the bigger one is about the same, because it, next page, about the same position, two-thirds of the way down, high school pay to play. Coaches and referees are in bulk of how we spend that money, and we're forty-four thousand in the hole there. So I'm not sure if we need to look at our, my understanding is we might have some slip through the cracks on pay to play, and we're not necessarily doing a good job collecting from the students for each team, or?
Or the money's not going in the right section.
Or, or it's, how much we're asking is the right amount.
Well, we talked about reducing that amount to get more kids to play, but that's where, that's where intel's going to come into play, right? We will not, or Intouch, we won't have these issues.
Well, this isn't, this is just a, we're spending more than we're getting issue.
I don't believe that, I don't believe that, we've been working on this for five years, and I do not believe that. We have just gotten money in the last month, and we don't know where to check that. So that is something that we've been working on for a long time, and we need to fix, because I think that Intouch will help that.
Okay. And, I mean, the, so, and this is what can happen, is high school football, high school girls' basketball, those can go into those funds, but specific to pay to play, that, that idea, I, I think is, and I don't have any reason to believe that's not accurate.
One of the things that I feel like we always have a problem with is the tax credit when it goes towards pay to play. How are we separating?
So that is, I believe that's another, I, I don't have all these memorized, but I believe I have seen that as another, right, right below it, actually.
For the tax credit.
So that's, like, how is that, like, I can understand, I use my tax credit for my pay to play, right, that goes in which account?
But I, that would go right there, it should go right there.
It's the pay to play.
It should go, as long as it's marked as pay to play, it should go right there, as if it's marked with sport, it's gonna go in the sport.
I don't know, that just needs to be fixed, I think it's just, I think, I'm concerned about, money is going to things, like, a tax credit going for sport, but it's not getting to where it needs to be.
Well, if it's going, so if it's going to a sport, it's to be used for the sport, not for the pay to play.
But that's what I'm saying, that I just feel like funds get confusing, because if parents are paying one way, and it's not being designated where it's supposed to go, and it goes somewhere else, and it may go into another account, like, I just feel like.
There has to be a better system, and we gotta work on that.
With Intouch, hopefully, we'll clear that up.
Right, I mean, you have parents that are pay for pay to play, and they get notices that they haven't paid for play, like, this has been an ongoing issue, and we have to figure out how to fix it with your help.
But using Intouch, that will solve all the problems.
Yeah.
Yeah, I hope so, it should definitely improve it.
So then, Dan, I just have a question on this, so we have all these scholarships.
Yes.
Okay, and a lot of these scholarships, this money has been sitting there for quite a while.
Yes.
So what are we doing to get this money to the students that these scholarships can be?
Well, um, they are marked per student with a student's name on them. So we can very well give it to a, somebody whose name's not marked to it.
Exactly, but are we contacting the students to get them to come pick up their money? And if it's been quite a while, do we contact the person who gave the scholarship and return that money?
We're doing, we're doing that with superstition rotary right now.
Right, but we have a lot in here, like that Collins, that's twenty thousand dollar scholarship money, like, sitting there. So either we need to get that to the students so they can use it, if they didn't go to school or college or whatever to use this scholarship money, then it needs to be returned back to the rightful owner, and we just need to figure out how to do that. Because we're really, shouldn't be the bank for these scholarships.
Is the tech net book insurance is a scholarship?
No, it is, it's in all the insurance money that's collected throughout the district. It all goes to one pot.
So there's a scholarship in my dad's name, that's probably been there for fifteen years.
Yeah.
So can I just say, put it wherever?
You can do it though.
You can do what you want with it.
That's what I was looking at, too. They could just put it towards athletics, or pay to play, or something like that.
It's your money.
It's your money.
Or whoever put that money in there, we just need that conversation.
And like the AJ Fire, Firefathers Ladies Club, like, we haven't done that for, probably, I don't know, part of that, probably like ten years. So I'm thinking maybe we could, you know, sit down and try to figure out where yours.
Now, the auxiliary operations, you can spend them anywhere. You can spend those on anything, MNO, capital, anything.
But do you need to get permission from the Firefighters Ladies Club to be able to move that money?
No, only for a scholarship, would that be the case. This is, this is.
But if that was a donation to this club, I think you have to get permission to move it.
Well, yeah, you would, obviously, yes, you would talk to the, but if there is no club, you know.
There's not, we haven't had that club for like ten years, but we could have an old president, right, something for you, right, just to have, to maybe?
I'm not, I'm sure there's some sort of.
Some process?
Yeah, that, if it's been so many years, you can spend it, I'm sure, but I'm not sure that's in policy or something somewhere.
Well, as I was saying, like, we have a lot of these accounts that are.
We know we have to go through all the accounts.
Maybe clean it up.
And really figure out what we can use them for.
And moving forward with the scholarships, I feel like if we don't act as soon as the kids get them and get them to them, we shouldn't be, like, putting them in our account, we need to send them back, like, I don't know why we deposit that money, that doesn't make sense to me.
Why doesn't it just go right to the?
Yeah.
That is the process that we will be doing, superstition rotary.
If the student doesn't claim it, you can just give it away to other kids.
No, you just give it back to the person who.
It's never, it's not been done that way, that's what we're looking at maybe for, it was never done that way.
So it wasn't done where it goes to the kid, or back to the rightful?
It does, it's not that it goes back to the person, it's not been done in the past, that's what we're looking at now.
Well, we usually, and we usually pay the institution directly, we don't hand the kid a check. We, then we will pay their tuition, we will.
So you write the school a check?
Yeah.
You write the school a check?
Yeah, so they'll come in and show us, they'll show us how many credit hours they have, they'll show us their, whatever their schedule is, and then we pay them, we pay the school.
So we got a scholarship from Marley, we deposited?
We didn't get a scholarship from Marley.
Well, I'm saying, if a student got a scholarship from Marley, we deposit that money, right, that's what we're saying? And then the student comes to us and we write the check.
Correct.
To them.
To the school.
And some, some of them have, you know, special language where you get some kind of money for books. You get three hundred bucks for books, and then they would, yes, that, they would receive that cash then to go, we don't, we don't buy their books for them, but.
But then if they don't claim it, it just, it's not, yeah.
Correct, that's what, that's how it's, that's why, that's why you see those balances.
Goes to the school, not to the student.
It goes to?
For their tuition, for their tuition, hang on, but if it's one of those, it's a.
Correct.
Alright, student activities, similar in some ways to auxiliary operations, but these, in order to spend this money, it has to be voted, student voted, by that club or organization.
Student council, I think, no.
That would be one, if, if, if we're looking at high school football, or high school softball, or whatever, if, if they wanted to buy uniforms or something out of that, they would have to vote as to how they'd wanna spend their money.
The football club.
The students, the students direct how we spend this money.
I thought, at one time, I thought the student council, it's doing that.
It goes through students.
They have, right, they have to.
And we're working on that, too, because they've been considering.
We've got a lot of work to do this, we know, hold your body.
So we generally don't see as much activity in these, just because it's a process and the students have to vote, so. The, you know, fundraisers and stuff like that, that's how there's revenue generated, but the expenditures are a little more rare. When you have a good reserve, then, okay, wow, let's buy uniforms, or let's buy whatever for that program. And then the last one here is the disposal report, this is the new one. The, the last month, I believe, was the first, and this is the same one you got last month. We haven't had any disposals since then of our fixed assets. So anything that's over a thousand dollars goes on one of our fixed asset lists, if it's over, I think it's five thousand dollars, it goes separately, so then we depreciate. But in order to get those off our list, get rid of them, dispose of them in any way, we need board approval. So we're, we're going to be doing it in this disposal report, also within your financial reports every month. So the top one here is the way we would like to do it moving forward, and, and you'll see that, this was, we, we received, it was also on your gifts and donations in the same, same financial report. We received a van donated, and Kelly Blue booked it at about a thousand dollars, so that was our estimated value. And we, from transportation department told, we didn't have any use for it, it was pretty banged up. So we, the person who donated, we said, well, when they said, do it, do what you can, it's yours, I don't want it back, dispose of it, do what you can for it, I wanna donate it to the district. So we sold it at a surplus auction, public surplus auction, which is probably the most common way you're gonna see us dispose of our fixed assets. And so in order for us to put it on auction before we get board approval, it's kind of how, we don't know what we're gonna get, so would you approve it if we got it for, if we get a dollar for it? Probably not, but we can't, if we've already got it approved, we can't post it for auction, so what we kind of decided to do was a reserve price, and if you've ever used, like, and you've been familiar with auctions or eBay or anything, that just means if it doesn't go for at least that, we won't have a sale. So this reserve price of five hundred dollars means it's not gonna sell, we'll still have it on our books, it won't be disposed of. But as long as we get more than that, it will be sold, and that's what you would be approving by approving that in consent agenda. Now, it was a one time down here that we had these previous disposals, you will not be seeing that generally, this was because we put this report into action after the fact on these that had happened this year. So it was, here's what we have done, can't really ask for approval since we did it, but we know we need to do this moving forward, so I guess the next best thing at that point was to let you know this happened. And so you have an actual sale price there on what we got for those vehicles, rather than the, the reserve price.
So where did this money go, the ones that we sold?
This was that, the two maintenance trucks.
I know, what fund number is this?
Oh, this would go into the five oh one, just like this sale of gold, any school property that's sold. And then you can only use them for capital expenditures, that money for capital expenditures.
So the board would have to approve it to go auction?
Correct, any, any disposal, even if we wanted to give it away, anything, in order to get it off our general fixed assets books, which we're gonna, I, I'm going to tell you now, we're gonna have a lot, because we have a lot of stuff on our books, it's not really there, because it hasn't been cleaned up for a long time, so stuff from the eighties, that was put in in the eighties, maybe, I don't, I bet, who knows where it is now? When we go to that, it's gonna say it's in this classroom, we're going there, it's not gonna be there, it's just not. So I'm, in a, we will probably have a huge lump, lump sum of, of things we're gonna be disposing of as we clean up our, our fixed assets moving forward, and hopefully, it won't be like that again.
So we never approved this before, this is something new that's going on, or?
My understanding is this is a fairly new procedure that we were a little behind on, and we weren't aware of, and so we're doing it now that we know.
Can you add to this what the current value is? Because it, I don't, I think people need to see the bus is not worth eighty-five thousand dollars anymore, and we sold it for five, so.
Well, yeah, I mean, in some of this.
What that worth is.
Right, but if it's, you know, some of that, I can, we can estimate, but, you know, if it's fully depreciated, it's technically worth zero, if we have a, if we have a.
I know, but I think the public needs to see that.
So if it's a value of zero, you just put zero.
Put the zero.
Okay.
Because then if you got five thousand.
But it's not always, I mean, it could be a laptop, you know, it could be anything, but yeah, yeah, sometimes it's not as easy to get an idea of what it's worth.
Yeah.
So we're doing this because we worked in keeping with the procedure or something?
Correct, yeah, my, then, I was told anecdotally that about two years ago, this was, this was a new requirement that the board would approve fixed assets disposal, and.
It's in the policy.
Right, so we are now making sure that.
So for two years, you haven't been doing anything?
Correct.
Wait a minute, that falls on you guys. Okay, so, now, have we covered with the department heads that, hey, before you go and dispose something, it's gotta be, we have to be informed of it, so we'll be.
Yes, that, I mean, that, it was, um, this situation is, was probably because we're sitting around during, our, our transportation department's sitting around during COVID thinking, how can we improve our situation? And they had time on their hands to look at, look at their inventory and say, well, we're not using these, well, I wonder what we could get for these, let me see if I can make some sales. So that was completely. So that was completely in the transportation department, um, with the sale and purchase of those.
And they were not aware of the policy?
Well, that's my, I was not aware of the policy more so, I would say. I would, I would not put that on that. That, that was my, my.
Sounds like you also need to get a little, little refresher course.
Well, and I, and as I'm saying, uh, I don't think there's been too much disposing of our assets. I think, I think there's a lot that we're going to, oh, we don't have it, we don't have it, we don't have it, and we're going to have a big, a big report for you one of these coming months here, and three months or so when we go through and do that.
Okay.
We, any, anything that's on our books, that, that is, uh, an, the audit term comes and we, we're going to tell them, that we're supposed to know exactly where it is and have a tag on it if it's over a thousand dollars. So, um, if we buy, I don't know, this, this camera, for example, I think, or, or that, um, that one that was up there had a tag on it. And it, we should be able to provide a report to them that says all of our fixed assets, that's in the boardroom, it costs this much, this is when we bought it, and it has this serial number and tag number on it.
We're, we're claiming it up.
And so, yeah, we're, we have a long way to go to get to that point where everything is where it is, is presented.
These are great, or somebody's on back in the day.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I, I was in here.
Hello?
And then just a question on the student, student activities. Some of these clubs that no longer exist.
We're planning it up.
I know, but what can, like, I just wanted to.
Find out where we can put the money and then that's what we're going to do.
Yeah, I was always wondering, like, how can you?
And I think that.
That's somewhere else.
I think that's been the hurdle. It's, we're not sure what we can do with it, so it's out there. So we need to figure that out, yes.
We got work to do, guys.
Yeah, just like that.
We know that too.
That Taylor Greedy, whatever.
Taylor Greasy.
I understand that, but it's just, you know.
Well, and I asked, I asked a question too, and I was told, they sent us money, I wasn't going to send it back. So that was, that was the extent of how we knew.
But that'll be good to be able to figure out how to just, like, clean up all those accounts, get that money, because it's going to other things that are needed.
Right, and, and a hundred percent. But the only thing, as we, as we look at those, anything that says fund balance, that's one time, it's, it's because it's there, it's not coming back unless we get revenue. So whenever, whenever we choose to make those decisions, we just need to keep that in mind.
Well, you clean your book at least five months, right? You haven't got it cleaned up?
Oh. Let's get going.
I just had to go there. I don't know, six cents I can.
Any other questions on the fixed assets disposing items? So that will be for now on, on the consent agenda?
It will be, and, and many, and like I'm saying, we're not always going to have one, so you probably won't have one every month. But when it pops up and we're disposing of something, it will be there, yeah, in, in this form. Just like gifts and donations, sometimes we don't have one, so you don't always have that.
So we're on two, three, five, four, prop three oh one discussion?
Yes, so, um, you, you, I'm going to leave this one, maybe this.
Originally it said salaries and then it changed it.
Like, it's the same, they are, they are one in the same.
Okay.
Um, so, um, can we currently, this school year? So, let me, prop three oh one traditionally has had three buckets. There is, uh, the first bucket that you can, um, that you, three different funds, and again, if we look back at our fund balance sheet, you'll see the three. There's eleven, twelve, and thirteen. That might be good just to use as a, so the base, it's called base salary, that goes straight into their base salary, um, just the same way it does from M and O, it just supplements their, their M and O. So whatever salary a teacher agrees to, part of that salary is getting paid out three oh one every paycheck. In, from that, from that eleven.
So that's a recurring.
Correct, it's just, it's just part of their, yeah, part of their, uh, paycheck. Twelve is performance pay, and that, this year, this past year was, or yes, whatever, this year still, fiscally, forty-two hundred dollars possible to earn for, uh, for teachers, and that will be paid out, what was the criteria?
In June.
This year?
So to get that, teachers have to, um, they create a plan of professional development for themselves, and then they have to earn ten professional development hours outside of their contract hour. There, the other piece, there's three pieces to it. The other piece is that there's a school-wide survey that goes out. We send the same survey out to all the campuses, to parents and students, and they have to get a certain percentage dock based on their enrollment. And then, um, my mind just went blank and I forgot the other one. Oh, their growth. It's part of their, um, the growth with their benchmarks. So typically, we, we work all that together, we work with Galileo to get growth, and then there's a percentage that they can lose based on what they've done or have not done or what they've reached. This year, because every, it was a hold harmless year, so it was hold harmless students, hold harmless teachers, um, with evaluations, and really, we were spotty with testing, like, we tried to test everybody, but we weren't in control of environments they were in. We weren't in control of how often we were with them, so it was a hold harmless year by the state department. So what we felt fairly we should do, they all did their ten hours, those that had been part of three oh one. We got the correct, um, percentages for the surveys, rather than, we felt we were being disingenuous if we took money away from them based on the growth when it was a hold harmless year. So everybody is getting their allotted forty-two hundred this year. We didn't take money away from teachers because they did the parts that they could, and the other piece was that hold harmless piece.
So that's what we've done traditionally. Uh, and then you see that for, for oh one two, that's the performance pay. Oh one three, there is a list of about five or six ways you can spend that money. It's called the menu. Um, what we have, in, we have put it back into teacher salaries. Um, the method in which we have done that is fifty-eight hundred dollars goes into that one plus two days of their pay. So it's a port, it, it's proportional to their salary. But it just, uh, just like eleven in many ways, it goes back into their reoccurring paycheck, it's part of their base pay. Whereas twelve is a lump sum they get at the end of the year.
So Dan, for the money that they get, the forty-two hundred, out of that money, instead of giving them a lump sum?
What, what, I'm getting there?
Oh, you are getting there?
Getting there.
Okay, so I won't jump ahead.
Okay, so this year, um, just a, a month or two ago, uh, legislation was passed that there are no more buckets. You're not limited to the menu, I just talked about with those five things. You're not limited in any way to performance pay. The way it's worded is there's, there should be a component of performance pay, which means you still have to do something in that lump sum area. But how much that is or anything like that, there's no real regulations to it. So, um, what we are thinking is it would be nice to put, um, money into the base salary that, um, would be in their base salary that we could, you know, that's on their contract, and that's what gets posted, and that's what their average sal, the average salary for our teachers would be. Um, and so this, next year, we're proposing moving three thousand of that forty-two hundred from performance pay, from that lump that they could get at the end of the year, and putting it into their base that they would get throughout the year, and it would be then guaranteed, um, rather than something they'd have to earn, uh, to get the full amount, and then keeping twelve hundred as a performance pay component.
And I think that would be good for their pension at the end, you know.
And I'm, I'm excited just to, for recruitment, to be honest.
I'm excited.
It's putting, putting that on the, as the base salary.
Because I'll comb my hair around how to get teachers more money or something.
Yeah, so, um, no, i- if anything, I guess teachers would benefit from that slide just because it would no longer be a percentage they could lose, um, potentially, if they didn't meet all of the requirements that we built it.
It'll be sustainable with that.
And I will say, um, on top of that, um, so, um, Mr. Powell mentioned, um, the Amazon sales tax. So, um, last year, the state was conservative with, so, back up. Classroom site fund is sales tax based, so it fluctuates. The amount we get every year, it doesn't, it's not an inflation rate like M and O is, and we know we're at least going to get that per kid. It is, uh, it is sensitive to tax. So you need to be careful with how you spend it, and you can't spend it all that year because next year it might be less, and you were promised to pay this much in their salaries, and then you'd be in trouble. So, um, the state, in knowing with the pandemic what was going on, was conservative in how they allotted or how they awarded, um, classroom site fund last year. With, um, online, say, online shopping having the sales tax implemented, it was unforeseen to them that was going to happen, so they actually, plus sales tax is actually up, which surprised me a lot, but a lot, a lot of people, I guess, stayed home and did some shopping. Um, so the amount we're getting this year is, um, significantly higher than, because they, they were being conservative and actually it was a good year for sales tax.
Do you know the number?
So it's, it's about seven dollars, or seven hundred and thirty-three dollars per student.
Business.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's.
Keep that a secret.
No, it's just, you know, but it's seven hundred and thirty-three dollars per student. So, um, that being said, I believe we will be able to not only move three thousand into their base salary, I think we can use, uh, classroom site fund to supplement even more so. So if, if we did that three thousand, I believe.
I'm so happy right now.
How this would work would be an addendum to their, because it would then, their, their contracts are going to change for their base salary. So they're going to need to have a, you know, a clause, or so to speak, or a, you know, an addendum. So I don't believe it's just going to be three thousand, I think we can do more than that, and I'm not a hundred percent sure on that number yet, but.
So on top of the three, you're adding another additional amount?
Correct. The shifting the three, you know, Rob and Peter to pay Paul, I might say it's not an increase. I believe we're going to make an increase in addition to that.
And we don't know.
Because right now.
I don't know the exact number yet, but.
So Dan, would that be an addendum on top, like, some of the, the base?
It's in the base.
But it isn't a denda, not an addenda.
It's in the base.
Yeah.
But it will be in the base.
So the contract you signed for forty-seven thousand would now be fifty plus whatever we can.
But we need to be clear that it's only for teachers that are certified and identified in the three oh one. It is not for classified, it's not for administrators.
So the base right now for our first year is like forty?
Forty thousand forty, four hundred.
Four hundred.
Forty thousand four hundred.
So we could probably get that to like forty-five.
Well, it would be, it would be three plus however much we can do. I've been working on it this morning, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not there.
It is not six.
No, it's not.
Don't even say six.
No.
Four, we're going to say four.
If rooting for, if rooting for the amount changed the balance in the account, I would be jumping on the table right now, but.
Shoot low, and then everybody's happy.
Yes, true.
So, uh, so that is, you know, that is one good thing coming from, from all, like, that was unexpected, is sales tax was up, so.
I just want to, I'm, I'm kind of, I understand what you're saying, but I, I just have to ask a question, even though it probably doesn't make sense. So we had the addenda, our world is addendum, so we had the addenda, and there was the one time.
They're still getting that.
So they're getting that, and then we're going to take the performance pay of three thousand and put it onto their base pay.
They, well, they got the one percent first.
One percent.
On the base, everybody in the district. Then they, everybody in the district got a two percent addenda, so they'll get half in December, half in May.
Through S or.
This additional money would only be from teacher salaries, and it would go in the base because then it would be there every year.
Okay.
And we're not sending addenda letters out until we finalize what the number is. And we also have to talk to the three oh one committee because that committee has to have input too of where the money goes, so.
And, uh, they have language in their contract as we, we always do, in case we have a chance to do this, we can raise or so. So Susan's just saying that it's a, it's a salary notification, and it's, it's, hey, we're going to give you more money, which I don't think, I'd be too bummed to go.
We don't really, it's kind of.
They don't have to sign anything.
There's that verbiage, right, on there, okay.
Um, in addition, the, the way we've done the fifty-eight hundred, this was from thirteen, the bucket thirteen, which again, the buckets are all rolled up together now, but plus the two days of salary, uh, it's, it's an administrative, it's a headache, um, to figure out what, it's a percentage, and, and, uh, I don't, I, I think we're just going to get to the point where we're going to get to a flat amount for every teacher.
Yeah.
Um, not going to change your salary at all, it's just how we're paying you. If you're ma, if you're making fifty, and we can give eight thousand out of classroom side fund, you get eight thousand. If you're making fifty-six, we're still giving you eight thousand, but you're still getting your fifty-six, it's just how we're paying it. It's, it's a lot easier to just make a flat rate for everyone, and that will change with the tax rate, and we'll figure out, okay, now it's nine thousand this year. Oh, it is a bad year, another pandemic, whatever, seven, seven hundred, seventy-five hundred, whatever, so.
So let me ask you a question, so if you're going to give them a flat rates for that?
That's not, he's, that's not what he said. He's, he, there's an amount that we pay the teachers. That money comes out of M and O. They take a portion of that out of three oh one to supplement the M and O. It's not going to look any different to teachers.
Yeah, it's just how we code it.
You're, you're paying, your contract's worth twenty thousand, he pays fifty percent out of that bucket and fifty percent out of M and O. And that's how he gives the twenty.
Yeah, that's not going to change.
I thought you were saying it was an addition.
Now, now.
No, I'm just saying, the way we've done it with the percentage, having to figure that out for each person, it's a lot easier just administratively. It's, we're always going to take the same amount out of the classroom site fund, and it will alleviate the M and O in the same way. How that's divided up, we can choose, so let's make it a flat rate, just to make it easier for, for everyone.
So with the three oh one, since it's going to be less restrictive, and we give the teachers forty-two hundred now for the performance, with that buck, those buckets being less restricted, is there a way to just put that whole forty-two hundred in the base?
It, it, I believe, it says something, that's why some people are, some districts are, right now, we're not doing anything we couldn't do the year before.
Right.
To be honest. Uh, we could have said we want to pay for performance to be twelve hundred, and that would have been fine. Um, we have, we have the right to do that. There are new positions eligible and, and things like that, but it just came out and talking to three or four other districts, they're not doing anything until they hear some, um.
You want part of it to be for performance?
That.
No, but what I'm saying is, since, so why can't you put that and then give them additional?
Remember, he said he's still looking at them, so give them a chance.
I'm just getting some ideas.
What was the question again? I missed it.
So like, if we were to get, so right now, we give a percentage, and that's how they get that forty-two hundred, right? Based on.
No, 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 no.
How do you get that number?
The forty-two is just to pay for performance.
What's available that year, and how many teachers we have to pay and what we can give out?
So can that number be increased or decreased, or it's just something that?
It can.
It can, right? So that's what I'm saying, so if it can be increased, why can't you just put the whole forty-two in there and then give them additional?
There is, that's why, because, so it does, it has a, has to have a component of pay for performance.
Right.
What that means, I don't know. It can mean zero dollars as far as I read that, you know.
So when you find all that out, you'll let us know.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
But remember, it all has to go to this committee, the three oh one committee has to vote on it.
Don't be a Debbie Downer, I'm excited.
I'm not, I'm just.
The other, the other thing, we have been giving this lump sum at the end of the year, so to take it away, in one year, completely take it away, probably be a shock to, to those who have been used to that, so.
Right.
We're just minimizing it now, what we do after that, we will, we'll find out, we'll have a better idea, but nothing we're doing really this year is, is because of, I guess I'd say, uh, the link, the, the, the roll up of all three of the buckets. We could have done this anyways.
And remember.
We would have done this anyways.
Remember when you put things in the base, it has to be sustainable, not for two years, for ten years, fifteen years.
It's going to be sustainable.
Yeah, that's good.
All right, Dan, keep up the good work. All right.
See, I, that, see, I, we saved that part for the end.
I shouldn't say that, I thought I moved on down. Hey, I'm excited.
Okay, now the developmental fees for new housing. Some of you may recall, um, last year, we, um.
Wait, I just want to say something.
Okay.
So just, this is me, as a parent, as a community member, as a board member, we all want good quality teachers in our classroom, correct? So you'll have to pay them.
We want quality staff all across the district, not just teachers.
What I'm talking about, just, we want to talk on teacher salaries, I mean, you want your kids to have a quality teacher, I want mine, but like, every, we want. So we have large class sizes, and we have not so great teachers. we have large class sizes, and we have not so great teacher quality. It's hard to do both and get quality teachers, so we need to make, this is very important to make, like, I've been on PTOs for years, and teachers were on pay freezes, and lost so many good teachers in this district, so many. We need to get those salaries up, that's all I'm saying. Okay, I'm done.
Can we actually have a sudden recess?
Sure, we'll call for a five-minute recess. Wait, you're all, I'm done.
Yeah.
So, Madam President, members of the board, I guess. This is kind of an update after we adopted our time clock plus system a year ago. Doesn't seem, seems like there's so much that's happened in a year, but it was a year ago. Previously, Apache Junction Unified School District was using basically time sheets. People were keeping their own time on time sheets. And then those time sheets were turned into supervisors who signed off and then those were turned into payroll. And we had at that time two senior accounts technicians in our payroll department. And so, one of the things I was asked to look into is, you know, how we were doing with compliance. And so, probably our biggest concern with people keeping their own time sheets is the Fair Labor and Standards Act. And it requires, and it's federal, FLSA, it requires that you are able to prove what somebody's hours worked are, okay? You're supposed to be able to prove that you paid them for their overtime. You're supposed to be able to prove that you paid them, you know, if it was a sick time, vacation time, whatever. And when you have people keeping time sheets, it's really difficult to prove that. And as I was conducting kind of some research and looking into this, at the almost exact same time, McDonald's was sued, a massive lawsuit, because they were allowing people to keep their own time sheets. And the ruling was, you can't possibly know if people are just keeping their own time sheets. It's impossible to know. And so, we looked into the different, we looked into the different options. And one of the things we did, I'm sorry, I'm on like the thirty slides. One of the things we did is choose time clock plus for a lot of what you guys mentioned earlier with, with Intouch. So, you know, it's one of those things where our neighbors are using it and I'm on two.
Yeah.
Our neighbors are using it. It was popular amongst our neighboring districts. It was also something that was approved, you know, through the school boards group. And so, that was one of the things we looked at. We ultimately went with time clock plus. And so, one of the biggest claims you can have, next slide. Now, one of the biggest claims you can have is overtime. Where, you know, we're required under the FLSA, if somebody's working overtime, they get paid time and a half. And so, if you have somebody working overtime and you're not paying them that time and a half, you can be in big trouble for that as an employer. Another issue that people don't think a lot about is if you have somebody who is, you know, one of your classified staff and they're homesick and they're reading and responding to the email, that's a problem. They can't do that. They are not allowed to be working because they're homesick. And so, you have to be able to track that information. You have to be aware of that and follow it. And it's much easier to do when you have that electronic system in place. Another concern we had was, on the timekeeping dues and done said and things. Another concern we had was how, how accurate was the timekeeping method? It's one of those things where I don't know if you've ever done things like, I will do this all the time. I'll think, I'm going to see how long it takes me to get from point A to point B. And then I forget to look as soon as I leave. But I was like, well, I think I left it like, I think it was five after, I'm sure it was five after. Maybe it wasn't, but I'm thinking that it was. And so, how accurate can you be? So, again, that's another issue. Whereas people are using a system where they're electronically timing in and timing out, that's not a problem. So, a problem we were having here is a lot of overtime. We were seeing a lot of overtime. And overtime is a big expense for an organization, a big expense for companies and school districts. And again, you're required to pay that time and a half for those people working overtime. Well, so we were looking at the year before we had the overtime, the year before we had time clock plus and now this year. And if you'll look, on 2019, 2020 school year, we paid fifty-one thousand, seven hundred and sixty-one thousand, seven hundred and sixty-one hundred and fifty-seven on overtime, okay? Conversely, with time clock plus this year, we still had overtime. But if you'll notice, it was about ten thousand dollars less. And I wanted to point out a couple of things because I still think there's some areas where we're high and I wanted to talk about why. First of all, with the pandemic, as we know, we lost some people. So, we had more people doing the jobs, sorry, fewer people doing their jobs. And so, we still needed certain things done. And so, they were building up more overtime. I tried to kind of break it down by the biggest users also of overtime and look at transportation. You see five hundred and seventy-two hours of overtime. And my first thought is, what the heck? We weren't driving kids, right? We're not transporting kids when students are doing at-home learning at this point. Well, one of the things we discovered is we did have somebody in a supervisory position that was abdicating a lot of her responsibility to other people that worked. And if you look at those transportation, those five hundred and seventy-two hours of overtime, almost half, I want to say two hundred and forty-three hours of that was two people basically doing the job that the person in charge of the department should have been doing. And that situation has been taken care of. But that's something that occurred. And so, we're thinking, you know, that number could have pretty much been cut in half on the transportation overtime if that person had been meeting their responsibilities. So, the other, the other hours actually are pretty, pretty reasonable. Maintenance, you know, you have people that just have to, you know, if an air conditioner goes out, we're not going to say, well, it's not regular business hours, you know, we've got to get somebody out there. If somebody gets locked out, if there's some kind of emergency situation, somebody has to be there. Additionally, think back again to the pandemic. You know, we were sanitizing everything. We're spraying things down, we're fogging. You can't have people in the building when that goes on. You're going to make them sick with that. So, those kinds of things were happening after hours. And so, that really makes more sense. Even just regular things like spraying for bugs, they have to do that outside of regular hours because nobody wants to be sitting in their office or their classroom when they're spraying for bugs. Again, the food services, we did have fewer people. We were also feeding kids, you know, throughout the district. I think that was one of our proudest moments, the way we took care of meals for our, for our kids in the community. IT, of course, we had a great deal, more support needed because of that online platform and making sure that kids have the technological resources to do their schoolwork and so, so on down, you know. And I think everything really does make sense. I thought the transportation was high. I don't think we'll see that again because again, I think that was somebody's failure to step up and do their job and so, other people were filling that void. But again, we've resolved that situation. So, I think considering the pandemic and some of those other issues, the fact that we still came down over ten thousand hours in overtime is a celebration. On top of that, I just wanted to say we did reduce one payroll person. We did not terminate anybody. This person had planned to retire. But we felt that with the advent of time clock plus, we would not have to replace them and we've been correct. The remaining person has been able to do the job with the support of time clock plus. So, that was also a savings of forty-one thousand. And when you think about, you know, hiring new people, probably even greater because we probably would have had to, to pay more to get that person in here. But that's, that's how it looks after one year of time clock plus. We're feeling pretty good about that. And I just wondered if you had any questions?
I have some questions. So, if you go back to like the school office and the district office.
Yes.
So, those hours, this is during COVID, correct?
Correct. But think about this. For example, let me talk about the district office. So, you have, most of the district office overtime is one person because that person does work overtime regarding board meetings. And so, there's, there's overtime for a person who's supporting, who's going to board meetings and that's after regular hours. So, that's, who shall remain names.
That's all you.
It's not all, it's not all that I would say.
But you, like, you have to, so for, I'm just going to use a TLC because I approve those. Those are mine on time clock. So, if we have, we have students down at TLC. We have to have certain number of kids with certain number of adults. We have adults that call in sick. We have no reserve of people. So, I keep Chelsea late, I keep Susan late because Gil and I were out that day. And so, they're doing the, they're splitting the six hours that Gil would have come in and then Bobby and Dan are splitting my other three hours. And so, that's, that's some of it too, especially last year with the amount of illnesses we had and people out. It's a lot of people covering for other people to make sure that there are people where we needed them.
And that happened at a couple of our school offices too, where we had people that were on FMLA or who had other situations. And so, the one other person that was still in the office was trying to do everything to cover for that situation.
And this will be part of what we talk about when we're together with ATM. Just because I don't know that people realize when they're doing it, like, one a week, an hour here, an hour there, how it's, how it's adding up.
And we did say, I should have mentioned this, a year ago, we agreed in cabinet that if people were going to do overtime hours, it had to be pre-approved by their supervisor. And we also said it had to be pre-approved in human resources because we felt prior to the advent of time clock plus that the system was being abused. And what we did find is that some people were checking in with us, but a lot of people still weren't. And so, that's another question that, that I have for cabinet that we're going to discuss in cabinet is what are we doing for the accountability part of this? If we're telling people this is an expectation, it's meaningless if there's no accountability involved.
What was the hopes in the beginning? We were hoping to save, you know, with COVID, it's kind of hard, but was it like eighty thousand or something?
Yeah, because we had factored in the fact that we didn't think we'd have to replace our second person, which has turned out to be true. They also talked about just the losses in overtime is a biggie. And they did say over, I think they said a four-year period. You're absolutely right. They were thinking you could save that much money. And again, I feel pretty good that even during the craziness of the pandemic, we still, just on overtime alone, you know, it's, it's ten thousand, at least ten thousand dollars.
So, do you think without COVID, next year, any person, you think we'll be lost?
I think we'll do better because again, we did have people unable to do things or fearful of doing things. And so, other people were stepping up to do more. People were working over their hours. And again, that cleaning piece, what we saw, another thing that's kind of a misnomer here, what we saw is we, we had other people doing cleaning. We had bus drivers cleaning after hours. We had, you know, people that were office clerical people that were cleaning after hours. And so, that's part of that too, where it's not, they're not literally doing school office work. They might have been helping with the cleaning. And I think that was the biggest piece and then the food service piece. Those two things where we just really had people step up and support. So, we were having places sprayed, that we were having things sanitized, doing deep cleaning. And you know, every time that we had, you know, a positive COVID test, they're going in, Larry's team's going in, they're deep cleaning everything, we're fogging areas. So, that was a big deal too.
I think it'll change. I think as people become more aware too, the number will go down. Because I even, like, I'll go back to TLC again. They, they're supposed to check out, say, at five o'clock. Well, they got there like they all do because they're good and ready to go when their shift starts at ten o'clock, but they come in at nine forty-five. So, they clock in. Well, then that pushes you to overtime. So, it wasn't them, they were getting there, so then they were in the class, ready to go with the kids, not even realizing that that now creates an overtime situation.
But I can tell you what we did eliminate totally is during that time sheet time, there were people that were, you know, they were adding up overtime to be like, well, I'm going to take all my overtime, I'm going to, I'm going to add all this extra work up and I'm going to flex my time, but I'm going to flex it over the winter break. So, I'm not going to work the whole winter break when we used to work that because I worked extra this summer. And one of the things that the Fair Labor and Standards Act also tells you, flexing time is fine within the pay period. It cannot be, I'm going to do this this summer and then, and realize the benefit of it in December. And I think we do that as supervisors. If Kathy comes to me in payroll and says, Susan, I've got, you know, there's no way I can get out of here at this in such a time. And I say, can you flex some time, you know, tomorrow, the next day? Yes. And so, I can tell you, in human resources, we really cut any kind of overtime usage because of flexing that time. Sometimes it couldn't be avoided, but for, and as my team would tell you, there's not a reason for us to need to be in overtime. Because if Kathy does have to do something for payroll, we can flex that, we can make that work. And so, I'm also lucky too, because I have a small department. I'm not, you know, the director of transportation with all those people. So, it's much easier for me to monitor. But I think that's why we need assistance in place and checks and balances just to make sure that, hey, is this necessary? Because it is a big expense for a district when you look at overtime.
Well, we're saving money with our work sessions being at one now.
Yes. That was the whole point. Because you noticed that other person, that performing arts coordinator person.
We're helping out too. Any questions from Mrs. Doyle?
So, we think as like the kinks are ironed out, we'll have more savings added?
I would anticipate. And again, I'll tell you that the savings you can't even map is, that is huge exposure. I know we're a small district and I get that. But it just takes one person saying, hey, they, they made me do this. I was home and they sent me a work email to answer. Or, I, you know, I was working overtime, but they told me to timeout. That's all it takes. And that can be a huge amount of exposure for our district.
So, when you're in cabinet, you're going to be expressing to people and they understand the flex time needs to be within. Because I do hear that a lot, well, I'm going to be working a lot this, you know, when we're in summer, but I'm just going to have an flex Christmas break or something.
And know that that does not count for your administrative team.
Right.
Right.
This is only for those employees, right? Because we're exempt. These are for, but something else I would say, and this is a very small percentage. I don't want to act like this is a lot of our people because it's not. It's a small percentage. But you know, let's face it, you do have people that, that in any situation can take advantage of the situation. And that's that checks and balances. So, under the law, under FLSA, if somebody works overtime, I can't say, you were exposed to, so we're not paying you. I have to. I have no choice. I still have to pay that person. However, what I can do is call that person in and say, you were expressly told not to do any overtime. You did it anyway. You're getting a letter of reprimand. If it happens again, we follow a progressive discipline model. You're going to have increased consequences. And again, I, I don't want to act like that's the norm because it's not. But if it happens, that's that accountability piece. And that's what's incumbent upon the supervisor to hold that accountability piece.
So, is there any kind of report that we would get, like quarterly or?
On overtime?
To see like how it's going?
Kathy can run a report from time clock plus and she can do it pretty quickly. So, I don't think quarterly would be a problem at all.
Okay. Just to kind of keep an eye on where we're at.
Right. And you know, it's also something that we, we have watched and shared with departments. And that was honestly, that was a big red flag, I know, for Heather and me regarding transportation. That was something we looked at and we're like, what on earth is up with this overtime? And that caused a deeper dive into some stuff and found some concerns.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll move on to three point seven, six days and vacation days discussion. Sorry.
So. It's come to our attention that we have had a practice of allowing some of our employees that were, certain groups of our employees that receive vacation days to, they accrue a certain amount each year and then they can bank those. And so, there's been a practice that's been in our handbook for years. It's gone on for years where you bank those, you can keep a certain amount. When you leave, you cash them out based on your daily rate. So, the first thing we have to kind of remedy is that we need to bring that to the board to get that board approved because it hasn't been board approved in the past. The second piece is just your decision on where to make that cutoff. So, I think there's some concerns about the payouts at the end and, and the district financially struggling with that time when we're paying them out. So, typically, the administrators have had a sixty-day threshold and the classified staff that receives vacation have had a thirty-six-day threshold. So, I think there's some discussion wanting to be had on where those thresholds should lay, lie.
So, I'm going to suggest that we kind of go over the policy that's in place. The GDD policy, which the first part of it is what was grandfathered, correct? I'm not sure if you guys already read it.
That's grandfathered.
And then it was changed to ten days after that. So, right now, but the whole thing is that there, the board has never approved and it's never been in our policy to pay out vacation days. They're allowed to approve them, they're allowed to use them, but there was nothing stating that they could get paid. So, I think that's what we have to address. Now, this is the support staff one for the vacation days, the GDD. And so, they're able to approve the thirty-six days for full-time employees. And then on GCD, that would be the sixty days. So, in conversation just from me alone and looking at other districts, a lot of them, they vary. Some accrue up to twenty days, some accrue up to thirty days.
Some accrue up to sixty days.
I'm just saying those different, every district.
Every district. Every district does it differently.
So, the handbook that we have, the employee handbook, has never been board approved and I don't know if other districts approve it or not. But it's, what's in the handbook does not match our policy. So, we have to align our practices with the policy. So, we're going to have to decide what we want to do as far as these vacation days. And then we would have to change the policy to include that payout.
Okay. We can't do that here at this meeting. It'll have to be brought up at regular meeting.
But so, this is just a discussion on how we're going to move forward. So, there can be a recommendation brought forward. So, right now, admin is sixty, classified is thirty-six, but each year, admin gets five days, correct?
Some get five, some get twenty. Depends on how many days a year they work.
And then they accrue that up to sixty. But then after a certain date.
As of June thirty, you can only have sixty accrued.
Right.
So, you have to use whatever you need to get back down to sixty.
Right.
Or you can use more. You just can't view, anything over the sixty, you lose.
Right.
Now, that is, is that per our handbook or is that per the policy?
That's per the handbook. That's been the practice for years.
So, we just got to clean it up, we just got to fix it. And a lot of different things. The policy in our handbook, we need to clean up in a lot of different areas. So, then I think, I had a conversation with Ms. Wallace that ASBA does some kind of handbook policy alignment where they will put everything together for us. And so, I think Mrs. Goff, you reached out to ASBA.
We're going to, Mrs. Goff and I are going to work on it next week with admin because we reached out to ASBA and we think that we can do it.
So, now is that something that we would have to approve to move forward with that handbook policy alignment with ASBA?
No.
We should have to get it worked. They're giving us the template.
They're not doing the work.
They're, we're not doing the work. We're doing the work.
Okay.
They're giving us the template.
But isn't there like a cost part?
Yes. It's like a one thousand dollars a year.
A year? For the template or?
Wait a minute. Thousand dollars for a template?
There's, there's.
They're doing our policy now, so we're paying six thousand dollars for our policy services through ASBA. Six thousand a year. So, if we want to do the template, if we want to do their, their handbook, they're charging us one thousand dollars. But we still have to do the work. They're giving you the template and then moving forward, they want to make sure that your policy is aligned to your handbook. So, that's the one thousand dollars.
Through the policy states. Which we need, we need really, we need it.
Like its district has different policy and field trip on those kind of things. So, they can't really do that for us because its district have different policy and field trip or other policy or sick days or vacation days.
So, I think Ms. Wallace just wanted to bring that to our attention so that we can now get, we're going to have to get this policy.
We need you to have a discussion and we need to vote on it on June eighth because we have people retiring and leaving the district on June thirty and they have days.
So, do you have a recommendation? Well, you could bring that to.
No, I mean, you got to have it here. I, it's, it's a, it's hard for me to say. I, you know, I don't, we, we had more than sixty and years ago, we went down to sixty. I think that there's reason for the sixty. I think there's reason for the thirty-six. So, I think it's just what the board decides they're, they're willing to pay out. And, and know that my recommendation definitely is that people get until next June first or July first of 2022 to do what they can with the days they have. But that there are going to be payouts if you want people to get down to a certain number. Because, so you're going to have to board approve that also because right now, the policy states that you only get paid out if you're leaving the district. So, you would have, we would have to do a special action item to make sure people were paid down to where they're at. They're their days. And, and I'm going to tell you, I can't afford for some of these people to take their twenty and thirty days off during the school year. So, on top of the twenty, they're going to accrue on July first.
So, policies, the policy doesn't allow for buyout?
No.
It allows for.
That's what I just said, you're going to have to agree to that or make a decision on that.
And then, as far as vacation days, the policy states that employees cannot take vacation days during school hours, two weeks before school starts and two weeks after school, the end of the year.
Without the superintendent's approval.
With the superintendent's approval.
Right. So, but I think those policies have to be talked about in cabinet and passed down the line because I think we've had people that taken vacations.
We don't know that they weren't board approved. We don't know that they weren't superintendent approved.
I'm just saying that people need to be aware of that. So, we have to have, so do you want to have a discussion on the days or did you want to just bring a recommendation to the board?
Well, I think you should have a discussion so you know.
Because if you think about sixty days, some, when somebody leaves and they accrue sixty days, it's per DM right now. They get their per DM. So, if they make five hundred dollars a day, they're getting sixty days times five hundred dollars. Some districts give a dollar amount, two hundred dollars a day, flat rate, doesn't matter per DM. Some districts give a percentage. I don't know. To me, this was a whole, I was a little thrown back by it. But as far as the days and there's been conversations prior, you know, when Dr. Cruz was here, that the sixty days was a lot, that with the amount of money that we have to pay out. out for the size of district that we are and the money that we don't have, to reduce that to like thirty days. So you can either do thirty days and keep the per diem.
It's a big jump.
Yeah. Or you can do the sixty days and reduce the amount. So there's lots of ways you can do it.
Regardless, they're gonna be, if we did the sixty days and reduced the amount, we would still be paying the difference to get them to the July first. There's not many people that, that have over sixty. If you reduce to thirty, there are people that definitely have over thirty.
So Heather, just from you being here and your experience, like, I mean, do you think, 'cause I feel, this is what I'm talking about, we're doing, like, you know, we're talking about the salary increase and doing all these things and we're taking five steps forward, but then we're, oh, by the way, we're gonna take, like, I don't wanna do that, I wanna continue to move forward. Do you know what I'm saying? And so, and continuing to do, moving forward, but in a financial smart way, like, what are you feeling or?
I think it's hard when I look, and I, and I've shared this with Mrs. Kimball when she's asked, each school district has different benefit packages that they give their administrators. Mrs. Doyle has tried for a couple months now to get those, they don't give them out, they don't share those out with the public because they're private things that they don't want every, they're not transparent about them because they're not, not everybody would think they're fair and equal. And, but they're decisions that the board has made and the superintendent in those districts to give those things as benefits to administrators. So for me, I, you know, those days kinda offset maybe not always being paid as much as neighboring people, 'cause I had my own little account that I knew I was gonna have at the end. It also, um, I think shows people's worth, that work ethic at some point too, because you're not burning days just to burn them to get rid of them, 'cause you're gonna lose them and you're doing the work that we ask you to do, so. But I understand at the same point, the financial concern about it, and so um, I think that it's, it's hard and I don't know that um, the administrators or the classified people, anybody's gonna stand up and tell you to take their days away from them, you know? I just, I know what I, what I do feel strongly about is whatever we do, they can't be penalized for not being able to use and get down to that number by next year, you know? They'd still have to use what they were given next year, but what they have banked here. If they use it, then great, but if they don't, you're gonna, we're gonna have to do something with those.
And you're saying if we go down drastically, you can't afford for them to be gone.
Well, like, some, one of our directors has forty-seven days, so she's gonna get twenty more, they are gonna get twenty more, and so now they're gonna have sixty-seven. If you wanted to get down to thirty, they have to use thirty-seven by July first.
Well, you feel like we have so much work to do too.
We do, we can't get the work done that we're doing while we're here, twelve-hour days, so. So the, and the other part of it would be to grandfather people in. So to grandfather whoever's here with the sixty and the thirty-six, that's just another option. And then moving forward.
I think you should do that.
Make it whatever you.
I kinda like that idea because.
And you can even, even if, when you grandfather, even when you make that new grandfather rule, like, um, Mrs. Kimball and I looked at a couple and one school district had a set amount for the administrators, a set amount for classified, and so you could even do that with the new policy of saying that the new administrators get thirty and their days are worth this much when they leave, not their per diem. And classified that collect vacation would, new people would get this amount with this payout and that would save them much.
The classified has been grandfathered last year, this year, where they change for the classified, not the admin.
But the problem is if we change it again.
Correct.
If we go down from thirty-six, I would just say to grandfather everybody in right now.
Me too. I like that idea just because I feel like, again, we're trying to move in a forward direction and I don't wanna be taking away for the people that have been committed here, I just am kinda torn about that, but we have to do something financially moving forward for sure.
Yeah, and I think making, making the change, because these people kinda played under certain rules, believing their days were worth something, but coming in, I, I don't know how you would decide fairly. I guess you can look at the range of who gets um, vacation days and kinda pick a median number to say that's what they would be worth.
How many do we have, would you say? Is it a big list?
Yeah. It's anybody that has vacation, so for classified, it's uh, about a page and a half and for certified, it's about half a page.
So then, the other thing is, the other parts of this, is that instead of using your personal days, you feel like.
We're gonna, we, we, there's been concern that because, so we went to general leave days instead of saying eight sick and two personal and then the two personal that you don't use roll over to sick. And so um, would not, we didn't really foresee that some people who don't get vacation would then see those general days as vacation days. So where somebody who doesn't typically get vacation and does not take off four days in a row, now we're using those days to take off a week to go somewhere during school time.
Not use their vacation days.
Right. So we're gonna go back and make, um, go back to eight sick and two personal, and we have clarified with administrators that anything more than two days off is considered a vacation and you have to use vacation days, you can't just put in six, six, six or general leave or.
Because in the past, that's what they would do, they would bank their days, so that when they did leave, they could get thirty, sixty days.
And I, we, I really didn't know that was happening, 'cause I was, I never, you know? So she was asking me and I'm like, nobody would do that. And then, and then I looked and they do, so that was my mistake. So we will clarify that and we, we have talked about it in admin meetings already.
We oughta just make sure that our practices are what they're supposed to be.
So if you um, direct me to, I can, I can come back to you with a recommendation for um, what they could be worth for classified and certifi, or administrators, certified administrators, if you wanna go that way of making a certain amount so that it's not as high.
The per diem, a certain amount or?
Yeah, yeah.
So the one was grandfathered in already, so I don't think we need to bring that back.
Well, you do because you, because it's thirty-six, so we want them to be able to keep their thirty-six.
But that was.
But you're gonna wanna take it down going forward.
But I'm saying it was grandfathered in with thirty-six, isn't it?
It was, but thirty-six, if you're reducing administrator sixty, you have to reduce classified thirty-six, in my opinion.
Direct thirty-six.
Right, but you're taking half away.
Oh, so you wanna reduce even the grandfathered in?
No.
No, 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 no.
You leave the grandfather.
Oh, we were talking about the new ones, 'cause the new one was ten days, wasn't it?
No.
Right now, we have ten days already for our classified, that's what we got, ten days per year.
Right.
But the accumulation, you can bank them up to thirty-six days.
And we wanna, so I would, my recommendation would be to cut that if you're cutting admin ones.
But if they already have thirty-six hours, they keep that.
Anybody on this list would be grandfathered in right now.
And then moving forward.
And then moving forward.
To change that.
If people are hired, if they're, if they move roles into something that gives them vacation.
What if they have thirty-six hours and then they, they, they use some of them and they go below eighteen with their new?
I think for, I would have to check with payroll and with um, Mrs. Doyle, but I think it becomes a um, bookkeeping nightmare if once they lose them, you tell, I think what, because even on this one that um, payroll gave me to see, there's different people in different places, but they know exactly who those people are. So I think you would have to keep that person there for the rest of their.
Time here.
Time here, and then that would go away when they left.
So someone.
This is really just for new hires then?
Right.
Yeah.
Unless we'll keep their sixty for the entire time.
Time of thirty, yes. But we do, just to be clear too, we do have to approve, we have to create a part of the policy that allows for payout so that we can pay out some that are leaving on June thirty. Because that was being done before without board approval, so we just wanna be sure that's taken care of.
And then changing the general and the sick and all that to really have it used how it's supposed to be.
Right, right.
And I think it's important to note, whatever you call it, and the, the reason districts change because of Prop two oh eight, saying we didn't have the right to ask people why they were using a day. So I think that the other thing to remember, it's very incumbent upon the supervisor, they have to approve that leave, and the supervisor should never be saying, I'm approving five days of general leave or five days of sick leave. They shouldn't be doing that. And if, if the person is gone three days sick, you're supposed to ask for a doctor's note.
Exactly.
If the person's gone five days, they're supposed to fill out FMLA paperwork. And this, again, is not something we've not communicated, it's been.
Right.
At every ATM, principal's meeting, cabinet, we talk about it all the time. So again, I think that the part we really need to make sure is that oversight, you know? I think a lot of times you know somebody's like, can you sign this down? And the same way electronically, instead of looking at it and saying, wait a minute, you, you know, you can't take a week off, this is the, the first week of school or this is about the end of school, and I think that's something that we just may, have to make sure that, that people are.
Where is that missing link? Where does that responsibility fall?
Well, what, what I find is, I, I'll tell you where I really see it, is on FMLA paperwork. Um, I'll get it or Edna will get it and the supervisor will have signed up on, on something that doesn't qualify. Somebody's going on a hunting trip and you're saying they can have FMLA, this doesn't qualify. And so I'm not gonna tell you that I see all the vacation stuff, we do spot checks and things like that, which I know Heather's done too, but it's, we have to rely on our voting administrators, we have to rely on our directors, that they are reading before they approve something for someone. You, you can't just say, yeah, it's okay, I'm gonna have to look at, at the circumstances regardless of what it's called.
And understand too that we, we know we need to tighten things up, but we also know that things happen. So if, if you're supposed to be in your sister's wedding and you have to be gone for four days, that first goes to your administrator and then would go to the superintendent. And then, and then what we do is we look, what should be being done is looking back on that person's attendance. If they're gone every Monday and Friday, then it probably won't get approved. If they've been here every day, working hard and they're asking for something special like that, you know, it's hard to tell them no, and so looking at that.
But if you're aware of it and you're making that decision, that's the way it should be.
Well, that's the thing, is being aware.
Yes. And I think just going back and revisiting things with the administrators and just talking about a lot of what's happening, so they're aware.
Just putting these last two topics together, if we do have a bunch of days that people will presumably be burning, because in tandem with can't use more than two days, that's a tough situation to try to burn your thirty-seven days.
Right. But we're talking of sick day.
And now they will have to burn if their grandfather.
Grandfather.
Well, you want people to use their vacation.
And take a break.
You want.
So the grandfather now you have to make a decision how many days.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll bring back our recommendation on June eighth.
Yes.
Okay, so do you wanna go over the sick days again or no? So the sick days, you're gonna change that.
The general leave to sick.
So generally, back to sick, right?
Yeah.
And that's gonna have to align with the handbook again and the policy.
Right.
So that's gonna have to be.
Yeah, we have to fix that to go.
Yeah.
And the payout currently is fifty dollars?
It's fifty dollars is the payout, so I don't know if you guys wanna change.
Oh, that's what I wanted to talk to you about, okay. So right now, they could bank up to, was it two hundred sick days?
Two hundred.
That's another thing that they buy out at the end.
Uh.
Correct?
Well, we had, we grandfathered some.
There's different, there's different.
So effective two thousand eleven.
Does anybody keep in track of the people that leave that are no longer grandfathered in?
Yeah, payroll can tell you right to the.
In two thousand eleven, some people who were uh, hired before two thousand eleven got grandfathered to eighty-five dollars per sick day. After two thousand eleven, July first of two thousand eleven, it went down to fifty and you can only um, use um, up to two hundred days.
And, and there's also though that you can't get paid out if you haven't been there five years.
Correct, and it's five years.
Right, you have to be there five years.
Correct.
So in other words, somebody could end up leaving at fifty dollars and two hundred days with ten thousand dollars in their pocket.
Correct. But they were here for those two hundred days and you weren't paying a sub and them when they weren't here, so that's the trade-off.
You're paying yourself more than the employee payout.
The sub costs almost double.
Correct.
And that's uh, five years, all or nothing?
Yes.
Or is it like a?
Well, did, is it still staggered?
The what?
After.
After five years and then you get paid fifty dollars if you leave.
Four years, nothing?
Four years, nothing.
But there's nothing if you stay for ten?
If you would stay, well, you have to be here five years or more.
Right.
To get paid fifty dollars.
Like some districts that's graduated up to a hundred, you know?
I meant the four years, so it's all or nothing, you get fifty or nothing.
Yes.
Correct.
All right, so, so the grandfathered in.
For vaca, it's only for vacation, you're talking about vacations.
So what is this, the eighty-five for two hundred days, that was grandfathered in?
Grandfathered in.
That was sick days.
That was sick days.
For the same reason that you couldn't take away from people who had already paid.
Those were grandfathered in.
Okay, so then after the people that have been grandfathered, it's fifty dollars for a hundred days?
No, it's still up to.
It's employees who are required to have completed their twentieth contract year of continuing service within the plan eighty-five, and then, yeah, um, it's uh, one hundred days.
For fifty dollars.
For fifty dollars.
One hundred.
So that should, in my opinion, it should be eighty-five for the hundred days.
Well, that's fine, now you're spending money though, so I just want you to be sure.
Now you're increasing the pay.
You're increasing the payout.
I thought you.
And everybody would be fine with that, but just be sure.
But it's, it's only a hundred days opposed to the two hundred that are, you get, the grandfathered in got eighty-five with two hundred days.
Correct.
So why wouldn't you give eighty-five and a hundred days?
How many sick days do we accrue?
Ten.
Everybody, classified, certified?
Yes.
Ten each year?
Next year, we're going.
So that's twenty years of no sick days to get there.
I'm fine with that.
The reason why, the purpose.
I understand.
The purpose of the eighty-five dollars was because.
Yeah.
We wanna keep teachers in the classroom and prevent them from calling in sick if they don't need to.
Right.
If it's only fifty dollars, you're gonna have to spend it. Eighty-five dollars, you're gonna think twice about, well, okay, am I gonna save that?
We can fix that.
You know what I mean? I'd rather have a teacher in a classroom.
That's fine.
Yeah.
And, I mean, from fifty to a hundred days, and then prior was eighty-five for two hundred days.
That's fine, that works, yep. I mean, we'll make that recommendation and y'all will.
I'm just saying, yeah, to keep our teachers, that's the most important.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
I mean, how much will we pay a sub a day?
Exactly.
Over a hundred.
So it's still less.
Right, so I'd rather give it to the teacher.
Right, yeah.
But you still wanna stay a hundred days though.
Keep a hundred days at eighty-five though.
Got it.
That makes more sense.
Did you have a question?
Well, all right, did we just end up doing something that we should've ended up covering at where you were?
No, we're just discussing.
No.
I have to bring it as a recommendation. I'm just saying, like, it don't make sense.
Are we good?
We're good.
Any questions?
No.
We just went right.
Okay. Three point eight purchase of air rifles for our program.
Okay, so first I wanna make mention that the um, So first, I want to make mention that the ROTC group was designated as a distinguished unit, which is the top twenty percent in the nation for this year. And they have also been designated as the Area XI's most improved unit for turnaround from probation and continuing to do great things. So before we talk about the purchase, I think that was a big deal, that they deserved to be recognized.
Okay.
Good job. So we have the opportunity, why don't you come up here and talk? I know we're buying something important, but you can probably put it in a lot better terms than I can.
Sure. Good afternoon. So unlike you guys, the federal government, right or wrong, has to basically sort of balance their budget every year. So COVID has kind of created a situation where the money's already been allocated. You either spend it, or you lose it, and you're not going to get it the next year. So that's kind of taxpayer dollars, hard at work. So because so many other folks are not doing anything, and it impacted us a little bit as well, but just not to the same degree that it did most other schools, particularly California. A bunch of money is available. So what they do is they say, if you want to get this whiz-bang thing, in this particular case, it's an air rifle electronic scoring system. We'll pay you for it, you have to buy it first, and then we'll refund the money to you. That's it in a nutshell. Now, what they do is, what we, what we do is we say, okay, we'll continue to host air rifle events. We got a bunch of schools that kind of participate.
So we have a promissory note that once we make the purchase, the government will pay back for that purchase.
But was it twenty, was it?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six thousand three.
Three hundred.
Can you ask them to pay the one seventy-five?
I'm trying to get a discount.
So any, do you have any questions about that? We'll bring it to the next meeting for approval.
So how, is there, is there, how much money can you spend? Is there more money that can be spent on other things?
That's a great question, yes. So right now, they're often to buy us new, new computers anyway. There won't be desktops, but it'll be with, you know, fifteen hundred dollar laptops. So I'll probably take advantage of that as well. That just came out last week, so we'll probably take advantage of that.
How many, how many ROT students do we have this year?
It was one oh three at the beginning.
Very nice.
Pre-registration was one thirty-eight, you know, I think COVID impacted that so much. So, so one oh three, we're at ninety-one now.
Okay.
So my hope, I'm just hopeful that.
Do we still have to keep that hundred?
Yeah.
Ten percent, whichever's lower.
Okay.
So if we have, what do we have now, nine, ten? So if we have nine hundred, ten, eight, ninety-one folks. So right now, we're at exactly ten percent.
Okay. So how are we looking for?
Yeah, they was gonna work on getting those numbers up.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
I think the counselors are the key. So we talked to the counselors. Well, for the first time since I've been here in four years, we'll have counselors returning, which is extremely helpful to help these kids advocate for things that are, these opportunities.
Do you have like, I know there's like local recruiters that have been networking with our schools. Do they, like, could that be a possibility for them to network and help you, or is that kind of a conflict?
I know, we work with recruiters quite a bit.
I'm just saying to get more kids into the.
My name is Mr. Bordeaux.
I think it's the community and parents. But the other part of it is other teachers too. A lot of times teachers don't know what you guys do over at ROTC. So the counselor was a big thing, obviously administration, the districts and the community have always been very supportive. So we continue to maintain that. I'm hopeful, because I don't know what next year's going to look like based on what.
I think it would be good for Scott to do, to help promote, maybe like a write-up or something. Something on the ROTC, because I know even in the past, when the board's been invited to kind of watch the awards out, like on the, on Davis Field and stuff, it's like a really great thing. And I think that people need to really understand the greatness of it. Where kids end up with your program, so maybe Scott could do some kind of write-up on it.
What kind of follow-up do you do with, because you had, I noticed at the graduation room, a few graduates had the Navy ROTC.
Flanders?
Stolen.
Rovers, whatever. Do you end up following up with them as far as, okay, do they go into the Navy? Have they applied to Annapolis or any of the other academies, or what?
Yes, all of them. So last year's, we had Brady Williams was in it, got the Ohio State full ride ROTC scholarship with about two hundred fifty thousand dollars. So we had him come back. He speaks of what it's like to, the culture shock of even a four-point-oh student going to college. It's a bit of a, bit of a challenge making the adjustment, but he's done very well. So we bring, we do about twenty-five to thirty guest speakers a year. And a lot of it, matter of fact, the Navy recruiter, the nuclear engineer Coleman is an AJ high school graduate. So, yes, yes, and yes.
So why don't we end up seeing all of this publicized?
The night of the awards they were having there, so we need to get better at looking at dates and fixing that, because they were at the PFW doing their ROTC awards, and the board should have been there supporting that as well, but we were, we were.
We were doing ours.
So we can look at the dates and make sure that that's.
We need better coordination on dates.
We think that was a shift, right? There was a date shift that moved into that date.
Yeah, something happened, but I mean, then we could have been there and seen that. Or even, maybe even having it at our PAC to where parents could come and watch it. So we're gonna work on those.
We would have had it at the PUC. We usually have it at the PUC, but it was.
Right.
No parents would have been able to come. Restrictions were, made it not possible.
Right.
Now, this, this marksmanship unit, your equipment, so you're gonna be going on out and actively engaging other ROTC units to come here and attempt to try and do better than our unit?
Right this second is not too difficult. We have a new team, and of course, you have a year of not shooting, so. But yes, we host, we host at least one event every year, air rifle.
So probably the one?
No, one air rifle event. We host fifty events a year, but.
No, but I mean, you just host one air rifle event?
Yes, till, till now.
We need to talk.
Maybe they're, they're really there.
No, but our intent is to get a couple, a couple of those in, because we get points for hosting. But we are, we're challenged because we try to get everything. That's what makes you a distinguished unit, is doing everything. But it's just like everything else. We're jack-of-all-trades, master of absolutely nothing.
Oh, we gotta change that. Where would our nearest competitor be, air rifle type?
Where would that, what?
Where would our nearest competitor be as far as air rifles?
So Skyline's gonna hop on board, they're starting a program. Queen Creek is, they just started a program, so they're gonna come. But Sarita is our biggest Navy challenger at Sienna G. And then we all, the Glendale Phoenix schools. So typically, I don't know, eight or nine schools will come participate.
We just gotta go kick butt.
Yeah.
That is the single most time expenditure we have is air rifle. Because it's a small group of folks, and you know, three, four, or five practices, you know, a week, and so. That's all.
Sorry for the wait so long.
Yeah, I'm kidding, it's okay.
No, it's good information. I like it.
You're gonna keep us posted as far as the competition dates then, right?
Yes, sir, we, yeah, we publish a calendars. It's incorporated into the AJ district calendar as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Something else? Can you start from from the back?
It's part of action items next time.
No, I know, but I'm saying you can come with them.
We already have it. We have all the paperwork.
Okay.
Good.
Okay.
And deliveries due when?
We don't, they can't buy until you prove it.
Right.
Next time.
We can lend them the money.
No.
Just kidding.
You can just worry about it, what does it?
You're violating the board policy.
Okay, item three point nine, private daycare transportation.
So you all received an email from the Little Prospector owners, Danielle and Erin Reynolds. For years, we transported to the daycare and picked students up to take them to our schools and drop them off from our schools. That was changed, and there was no pickup and drop-off given after some board decisions. So they all came to visit me and just expressed the same things that they expressed in their email, that they would, they really want to be partners again and support us however they can. And then we talked about just the partnership that we had in years past. When I was being trained to be a reading specialist, we were taken down there by Mrs. Sutter, and those were the students that we practiced on. Because they had kids during the summer, and we, we used those school age kids. So just talking about things like that, that we had shared in the past. Them coming and speaking to the early childhood classes that are here. So their hope is that we can transport again. And what we talked about was, would we charge them per head? You know, maybe a dollar a student? Would it be weekly? Would it be monthly? They have about fifty students that they would want transported to our schools. We also talked about, they have a transport van, a van that they can transport about twelve or fourteen kids. So we talked about how that might benefit us. And now that they're not transporting, they don't need that anymore. So I just need some direction on if it's okay to have conversations with them about transporting. And then I would come back to the next meeting with a recommendation based on what we just, we talked about together and collaborated on as a agreement. And then we would put that into a memorandum of understanding. And the hope is that we can have that ready for the July thirteenth meeting, so you can vote on that, and then we can start transporting for the first day of school.
Okay, so I want to go.
Okay.
You go.
So at the board meeting, I'm going to personally be making a public apology to the Reynolds family, because. Dean and I were on the board, I believe, at that time, I don't think Chelsea was. We were told by our superintendent that it was illegal and confirmed through legal that we could not and should not be doing that. So when we raised our right hand and decide, and told the community that we were going to divide friendships and make the best interest for AJUSD, that's what the board had to do that night, when we were told that it was illegal. So as a board member, I set aside the friendship of forty years and made the decision not to transport, because I was told it was illegal. So I will be making a public apology for my lack of, when I personally went in there and had had conversations before the board meeting, and then upon oath on the dais, we were told that we would, we could not and should not be doing that, because it was illegal. So that is the reason why I voted to stop doing it. It wasn't because I wanted to do it. In fact, I remember the ride home was not a good ride home. I felt terrible, I've been friends with these, this family for forty years. But when I was told that it was illegal to be doing this, we stopped it. So I personally will be making a public apology at the board meeting. And I am, I personally want Heather, I'm asking Heather to, again, continue the conversation about the transportation and how we'll be operating this. I know that we lost some kids because of it. I tried with TLC to get them to come at five-thirty in the morning, so I wouldn't lose these kids. We couldn't get them in that early, so we lost some kids, some siblings because of it. So when we got wind of this, I was very frustrated and disappointed and mad, to say the least. So that's where I am right now.
So when Ms. Reynolds emailed us about doing the transportation again, at the time when this came to us, I was not the board president, I was a board member. I trusted that we were getting the information that we were supposed to get. So this time around, I asked Ms. Wallace to please check the legal to find out if we can or cannot transport these, these children from daycare. And she did. And we got an email back from legal saying that it's perfectly fine for a public school district to transport these kids. Now, we were told four years ago, public school districts were not allowed to do this transport. And that is why we voted the way we did. And I'm very upset when I found out from legal that they didn't even get notified about it. Not even asked.
Well, how?
So anyway.
Okay.
So letting Heather do the conversation with the Reynolds for this daycare. I mean, Danielle and I were volleyball moms together for a long time. We're like family to me. This is very upsetting. This was one of the hardest decisions we had to make. And it was based on a lie. And so for that, I'm extremely aggravated. And the attorney actually directed us to the policy to show that. It shows in our policy that we can do this transport. So that's the information.
I, I think moving forward, the good thing is that they are supporting us again, and they get a lot of traffic through their, their school. And so to have them partnering with us again, and hopefully sending kids our way instead of possibly kids going a different way will be a good thing.
I mean, they are the core of our community, and so we were doing networking, and it was a good thing.
Well, it's important to partnership with people in your community. It's so important to have those relationships. And so, I mean.
I had to read the email five times, because when legal, when we were sent the email, I was like, and I read it again, and I read it again. And it was just one of those meetings where I remember the family and the audience, and it was like.
It's horrible.
There's no option at this point. If it's illegal, it's illegal, we have to stop it. Would that not be in the case? It was very, very disturbing and upsetting to me. And so now I feel like we need to fix it and make it better, because we need that, we need that support.
And so this would go across the board, Ms. Wallace, to all daycares that we would.
Yeah.
So we would have an agreement with all of them?
Well, any that are in the, in our city limits or school district boundaries.
So basically, we would have an IGA.
It's a memorandum of understanding, so.
Hello, you.
Yeah, so any, I, my understanding from speaking with them is unfortunately, many of the childcare facilities that are in town have had to close or are in the process of closing due to the pandemic and things that happen, so. But absolutely, and we talked about that. This would not just be, they were advocating, obviously, for themselves, but really advocating for us to just be back working with the childcare centers within the district.
Yeah. And the other thing with the transportation is if they're not using that van again, right? Because they had to buy that van to be able to.
They had to buy the van to transport. So we, so I talked to them about what they might want to do with the van in the future, and that we would be interested in possibly acquiring the van. So they're gonna, they're gonna decide about that.
And you, and the idea is possibly using it for several things? Like we could use it for transporting, maybe.
Well, it, it would be, we, it would be great to transport our smaller clubs and athletes. It would be good to transport, we, we typically in school districts, when you send teachers to a training, they all go in a district vehicle. We don't, we have not done that for years, because we haven't had vehicles that we felt were. People don't want to drive them. And this way, that van could take teachers or staff members places.
It's on some new vans, brand new.
It's brand new.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea.
So.
And then there was comment, was there a conversation about more daycare?
Yeah, we also talked about. Yeah, we also talked about, they brought up the idea of partnering with us or doing something with us with our daycare, because they have seventy kids on a waiting list. And so, for us, the daycare is a great thing and we don't want to get rid of it, because it really is a benefit to staff members. But it's hard to staff and it's hard to keep quality people, so having a partnership with them would be really beneficial. So, we're gonna talk more about that.
That's excellent. All right, any questions on that? Mr. Dan?
He's thinking, I see the wheels spinning.
I don't know if it'd be appropriate to ask if who was involved in that decision?
Was it the board? Like, who were the board members?
Who passed the information?
Well, it was par superintendent brought the recommendation.
Okay.
Okay, moving on, item three-ten, school resource officer, Ms. Wallace?
So, there's been a, there's been a lot of talk for years now about us having a school resource officer. We had one in the past when Thunder Mountain was open. So, we're looking at seeing what, how we can partner with the AJPD and, and also use funding from ESRS to pay for a position that we could support and that the police department would help support. So, we're just looking at, at what options we have. When I, I spoke with Officer Harshman and let him know that, once we applied for the grant and put that in there, if it was approved, then we would go back and, and talk to Chief Kelly and Officer Harshman about how we could move forward. I didn't want to waste their time if it doesn't get approved. I, I would imagine from what Edna and I have read through, it's a safety piece and so that the state would, would agree to that. So, Officer Harshman was excited about that opportunity, because he said they've talked about it for years at the police station, but it's just hard for the funding and that they've had challenges themselves. So, but they were happy to work with us.
Is this based on the information that I provided to your predecessor regarding DOJ grants for SROs?
No, this would be through the grants that we have with the state right now. We did some of that grant work and were not approved, because just the dynamics of the city, they're not, it's not as needy as some other places, so-
Which is good.
Yeah, yeah. So, it's kind of a catch twenty-two. But this is another way for us to, to go about it and use some grant funding.
And that would just be for one?
We hope we can get two. We, you know, we're not sure, we, we would like one, we know we need one for the high school. We'd have another one that was on the junior high campus and then they would kind of tandem if the elementary schools needed support. The only bad thing is that Peralta Trail cannot use the resource officer, because they're outside the city limits. So, I did confirm that with Officer Harshman. He said they would not be able to go out, because that's past their-
Sheriff's.
They would have to call the sheriff's department.
Should we work with the sheriff's office and see if there's any grant available?
Um, I don't think we'll qualify for the grants, because of the dynamics of this, the area. So.
So, those are dynamics, have to be like a certain crime or issue? Out there, it's, I get it.
Because there's limited funding for those grants also, so.
Sticks, because of stations, like-
I know.
All right. So, moving forward, not only the resource officer, but in the past, we had those key nights through the county. Are we gonna do that again?
We, we haven't talked about that. If you want me to look into that, I can.
That'd be nice.
Yeah. Okay. They did, not last year, but probably with the report.
Before we went on the pandemic.
All right, three point eleven, community newsletter, channel fifty-one.
So, I've thought a lot about Mr. Bouders' discussion about the community newsletter and the challenge that I keep running into is just how to get to people, because not everybody has social media. We obviously don't have everybody's email, but we want to get things out there. So, we have someone who is retiring from the school district, who is very familiar with channel fifty-one and he worked with, with getting that going. Honestly, from the time he stopped doing it, if you turn on channel fifty-one, it's still his loops that are there, nobody's worked on it. So, he's offered to come in and talk with us about using that venue to see if that gets more out and, and hits part of the community that we haven't been able to reach. So, I wondered if we could start with that before we go down in newsletter, not because, just because of getting to people and see if that would help us touch people that right now, we, we haven't been able to get information to. So, just wanted some feedback on that.
So, then, I also gave Mr. Bordeaux the Superstition Living-
Yep.
Magazine-
Yep.
That goes out. I think it's mostly all Go Canyon. I get it at my house, I don't know if you-
Right, I get it.
You get it? To maybe-
Put some things in there.
I think, yeah, I think we had some kind of relationship with them, where we paid for that, part of it or something.
Okay.
I'm not sure. But that's a good thing.
Yeah, that's a good one.
That's in there for Go Canyon, community or whoever.
Yep.
So, that's kind of like-
And he can, that one's good, because he can highlight anything in there-
Right.
That is applicable for the month coming up or-
Right. Now, I don't know if there's like a, some, like a page ad, we gotta pay for that? Like, how does that, do you know?
Well, did you want an ad or do you want him to write and put things in there?
Right, like, but I'm saying, like, do we want to put, like, is there a cost for like-
So, we can check.
We can check into that. Like, what does that all entail, to be in that superstition limit?
And he, um, he's also working with the chamber to get an ad in there.
There's somewhere, it's a quarter page ad.
Yeah, so, we're not too-
It's a, it's a, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's a, it's a twenty-eight second video, along with the quarter page ad, that'll be in the Chamber of Commerce magazine. And they've already got the video, the description, all the photos, so.
And they did. I can't remember what, Chelsea, you would probably know better, that, that traffic is crazy when they get in there, so.
So, it'd be a video with an ad.
So, trying different things and see what works.
Any questions? Are you having a question? Can this function as a question?
We're still on social media, though, as far as-
Yeah.
Kind of staying informed in the community.
Yeah.
Was, was there anything put out about the, the math curriculum? Because I think we've never seen anything.
He did.
Yes.
Social media.
Okay. Will we invite the people to come to the district office?
How many people?
Check out the curriculum.
None.
Zero. But that's not, that's not just this, that's all it's-
I know.
There's typically nobody coming in. But you're, you're welcome to invite people.
People to come.
What's the deadline on it?
Uh, it'll be there through June.
Through June.
Yeah. And there's a suggestion, Max, they can put some ideas in, so it's there.
Any other questions? Not really. Okay, item three point twelve, board superintendent goals discussion. I know some have submitted some goals to use for the performance, right?
Seven, you're reserved.
Right, so we received a few. Did you send any this?
I was sleeping, that's what I was planning on doing.
Yeah, so, I mean, I don't know if you want to have the discussion, some of the goals that I think compounded with Mr. Concho was, um, academic growth, attendant, graduation rate, um, attendance.
So, those would be my top three. Would be-
The one we're reading.
The increasing the graduation rate and then increasing student and staff attendance, because they, I, the only way we're gonna get better is if people are here, whether they're little or big, we need them here with us. And then, um, growth, so that kids are moving up the hill instead of down the hill. And so, um, my thoughts were that those would be the three superintendent goals, but also bleed down into the district. And so, the principals would support that and there would be incentives with their performance pay to meet those goals. And then, the staff, the twelve hundred that we take, um, we keep from performance pay would also mimic those, so that the teachers would help, the principals would help me, we'd all be working together to meet those goals. And the, the one thing that I'm asking for this year is that I feel very strongly that we have to create a culture of change and one that people feel safe in. And so, I don't have concrete numbers for you of what the number should be, but what I would like to do is get to what this year's graduation rate was, what attendance was, what growth we got, and then just constantly be talking about moving forward. So, not putting pressure on people right now to get to a certain percent, but just trying to believe in the goals and working forward. And I think if we get those three things in place, really good things will start happening.
One thing, and I, this was just something that I was saying about en route to the meeting, tied into that graduation rate, is also, do we have any information as far as our dropout rate? We, because I think, uh, my opinion, if we get that lower and increase the graduation rate, I think that would end up, do we have something in place as far as identifying students that are even thinking about-
Yeah, I think that's just, that's just being aware of kids, more aware. So, making sure that the staff at the high schools kind of keeping an eye on everybody. So, if someone's not there for a while, where have they gone? Did we make a phone call home? Do we know what's going on? We're trying to put in place a grant position for a community liaison, which was a role that was filled here, part-time, and that, that employee's moved on to the high school. But we're encompassing in that, um, an interpreter, because we've, there's a, there's definitely a larger pocket of families that we're not hitting. And so, um, just being able to be a resource to parents and help them get kids back here. I've also started working with the high school and they've been really supportive about looking at, um, just what the alternative program looks like at, at the school and different options that we can give kids to be here with us, earning credits and, and making up credits they've lost or getting back to where they need to be. And so, I think putting those things in place for kids and, and really trying to understand why kids are leaving us. So, are they leaving us because they're working jobs to support families and they can't get up to be here first thing in the morning, so they just blow the whole day off or drop out? Can they come in, maybe when they get up at noon and come in for a couple hours and work on credits and be able to keep doing what they're doing for their family, but then getting to that diploma also?
And then, the truancy, because you have a plan for that.
Yeah, and then, just, um, working more closely with a truancy officer and really looking at the data and looking at the data with the principals and just making sure that communication's happening and that, um, we're sending people to kind of check on kids and do those things to get them back here with us.
Okay.
So, one of the things that, I think I mentioned this to you, is this year, we have a lot of kids that didn't graduate. I think that was a high number.
No, there really wasn't. It wasn't that much. There was like, what, thirty-eight students that did not graduate that are working on summer, summer programs?
Right. So, in New Jersey, what they would do is they would allow kids to proceed in the ceremony, like, they would walk, they would not get their diploma, but they would then go to summer school or take the class or whatever to receive that diploma. So, I don't think we do that here.
We don't. And, and I grew up on the East Coast and the same thing happened, but when I spoke to the administrators that have been at the high school level, that's not typical in Arizona, because you take away the incentive for kids to complete. And I know that logically to us, that doesn't mean anything without the diploma, but for many kids and families, that kind of makes it like it's-
Peer pressure.
It's good enough.
Yeah. Well, I'm just saying, like, usually, like, in back east, you would have an agreement with the family, that the kid would-
Right, but if they don't come back to finish to get their diploma-
Yeah, then it, it, it changes a whole experience.
So, I, I will say that I think there were circumstances that I ran into the last week, um, that I probably would have made a different decision for that to happen. But I don't think that it is just a blanket statement for anybody to-
I'm just trying to figure out how to get those kids to get into summer school or, and not just say, forget it, because I'm not walking, I'm not gonna do anything, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Like, what's the incentive to get them to-
I think it's, I think it comes way before that.
Yeah.
Like, I don't, I think that parents want their kids to walk and kids, I would guess, want to be a part of that, but if they're already on that path where they don't know that they want to finish school, I don't know that that's as much. I think it's, there's work that has to be done before, you can't do it that week. It should have been happening in January, it should have been happening in August.
That's what I'm saying, how can we be proactive to get those kids to graduate?
Well, did you hear what you said, too? In the four years I've been here, this is the first year that we've had counselors at the state.
And it's true.
Yeah, like, I think that's gonna help building those relationships.
Because if you don't have good counselors that understand our students and, and their plan, like, when my, when I think back in two thousand sixteen, when I was sitting down with my oldest, there was counselors that understood and the plan of, you're gonna, you know, these are the things that we need to get better at, working with the kids and, and really realizing what they're missing and what they need. It needs to be a more individualized thing.
As I said, what is the conference, conferences, parent teacher and parent student, whatever, conferences at the high school, what is like the requirement? Because from my background, it was, you had to have every, you had to have, how many half-days do we have for due to conferences? Do we have that mapped out?
Two, two this year.
We had two that year.
One in the fall, one in the spring.
Okay.
Two days in the fall.
Because we, what, when, on those days, it was a priority to get those kids in there, rather than wait for who wants a conference. And it was, we sent a letter home, we actually sent certified mail home, to make sure they got it, to let you know your kid's in danger of failing the first quarter, because you have a good idea who's gonna be in danger after the first quarter. And, and so, just that, and then we would assign, you know, I was in middle school, a mentor teacher or counselor would work fine, but a weekly check-in.
Yes.
And, and just, you know, and at that point, you kind of feel like you might have done due diligence, you know, like-
Right, right. But I'm saying, we have to be proactive.
I'm, I'm not sure what the process is.
That's what I'm saying, like, what?
That should be the-
The work on across, of the working on the eyes.
Yeah, and that's the biggest, when you have kids, when you have kids that are in sports, they're getting, they're going, like, hey, you have a D, you need to go in.
Well, they keep an eye on those kids.
You need to go in to, you know, study skills or whatever it's called, but what about the kids that aren't doing anything? We're not looking at those. We need to look at them and make them just as important and be like, you should probably go into-
And, and I feel if you're doing that, you can then say, no, you didn't earn graduation, and I'm cool with it.
Exactly.
Because the other thing for me is, as a teacher, I taught eighth grade, so we had a ceremony. But if I had a kid who didn't do their work all year and they didn't make it, and a kid who did great, you know, wasn't maybe the sharpest, but did their work and made sure they made it, to walk across the stage together, it, it, it-
Devalued.
It does. And it's like, why are you here too, man? You didn't do, you know, you didn't do your job.
It's not a good look for the kids that are really trying.
The other thing, too, is, you know, you get, okay, this, this entire year, past year's side, you do end up- up having some kids that for whatever reason, they're a credit or two credits shy. Have we ever thought of having a graduation at the end of the fall semester for those that, hey, I've got it?
We haven't.
It's something we probably ought to take a look at because if we've got a kid that goes to summer school, picks up a credit, and that's all they need, or maybe they need two or three, but they take summer school and they got two or three credits during the fall semester, they've got their credits, they're good to go. Now, all of a sudden, well, you gotta wait till May or June of the following year, there's liable to end up saying, well, why even bother?
Right, right.
Boom, get them graduated. They get their diplomas. Just saying.
Yeah.
Are the parent teacher conferences gonna stay on Zoom?
They're, they are.
I just feel like that gets more parents to actually go to it.
So the recommendation that I've made to special ed, cause they do a lot of parent meetings and even with the principals, is to leave that as an option this upcoming year.
Do they notice the high school difference at all? Like, um, cause I know a lot of parent, high school parents don't go.
I think, I think at elementary, we, we got a lot more than typical, you know? Or the ones that typically maybe are harder to get, were able to get.
It's kind of like Dan, what Dan was saying though, cause when I signed up to, for the high school, you know, to do the conference, they were like, you really don't need a conference.
And they're, and you're taking a spot of someone.
Okay, great. So if you don't have anything they could say and my kid's doing good, save it for somebody else. And that should be.
Right. That's.
I probably Zoom would encourage, hopefully get more parents to.
Right. Yeah. I think it's important too for kids to be part of those conferences.
Yeah.
So that they own what's going on, you know? So.
Yep. More work to do. Any questions on that one, on the goals? Are you guys, you know, what are you thinking goal wise, those three good goals?
My goals were aligned with, apparently with.
Cause I know we don't think it goes to Denise from the contract, so.
Well, that, like I said, about the, you know, find out our, our.
Dropout?
Dropout rate. If it's, well, thirty-eight is, thirty-eight's too many.
I don't know, but those weren't all dropout. They just.
No, they're short and ready.
So summer short.
And there's what I'm talking about there.
Yeah.
Thirty-eight, okay, go to summer school, get you one credit that you need, or go to summer school and pick up your other additional credit that you need.
Right.
Graduate in December, there's your diploma, you made it.
Yeah, there's five or six that I know of that are my son's friends and they're just a little short, but they're already set for summer school and ready to go, so if we have something like that.
Yeah.
If you had something like that, there's the incentive.
Right.
Instead of having to wait till June of twenty twenty-two.
But I also agree that we need to catch it early on.
Yeah.
Definitely we could prevent that.
And that also is encouraging parents to get on parent view. I mean, it's all right there in front of you. If you're not getting on parent view and seeing that your kid has thirty-three missing assignments, then, you know, you might want to have a conversation with them. That has everything on it that a parent needs to see.
I agree.
How many people, how many parents know about parent view?
Everybody knows about it, it's just a matter, I check it weekly, but it's a matter of, you know, who, how many, who do you have doing it? I mean, not this year, I did it a lot more last year, I did not follow it at all, but I didn't need to, but you can see how your son's performing, your daughter's performing.
So a question on the goals, so would that be pre-filled comfortable?
I don't know. Uh, we're going up. I just. I can give you pre and I can give you this year and then we can just watch it go up.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just kind of.
Yeah, yeah, no, I understand. Yeah.
Okay. We are on. Three thirteen.
So there's a board meeting, every year it happens, just the way the calendar. Just the way the calendar falls. And every night when we're sitting there, we say, remember for next year and we always forget. But we caught it this year. There's supposed to be a work session on the twenty-seventh. It's the first day of school and I hate for, to have to be confined here when we can be out and doing things. So um I think the recommendation was to have a work session on the twenty-seventh at four, right?
That was the work.
Yeah, on the thirteenth, sorry. So the thirteenth is our regularly scheduled meeting, but we meet at four.
July thirteenth.
Yeah, July thirteenth. We'd meet at four and go through some things and then um.
And then not have the July twenty-seventh.
Right.
So it'd be like November where we can buy.
Yeah.
Right, in July too.
And then I.
I mean, June.
So we're, we have a.
July, so it'll be July thirteenth.
Yeah.
From, at four, we'll have a work session and then at six, have a meeting.
Right.
And then no meeting on the twenty-seventh.
And then can we just make it for future to have just one meeting in July?
We'll remember.
June, July.
And then we, we, I had asked about a work session in the summer.
Retreat.
Retreat, um, but it, I know it's really busy for everybody, so I think it would be best just to keep meeting with you individually or when you want to meet in the summer. And then the other piece of it was, we had asked ASB, ASBA if we could pilot their superintendent evaluation. It won't be out till July. So the point of me wanting to meet with all of you is so we could go over the evaluation and make sure that I interpreted things the way that you all interpret them so that I was doing things the right way. But it won't be here, it won't be ready for us to see until sometime in July, so we thought maybe after summer, when we're back together on the thirteenth, we could find a time in August, once we know when we're gonna have access to that document. And then just do your fun stuff that you have for the summer and when you, you know, when you come in, you come in.
Um, so were we, we were supposed to have a retreat in June?
No, cancel.
The eleventh.
Yeah, we'll cancel.
Yeah. So we'll look at that again in, at the July meeting?
For August.
For August, yeah, okay. So Dan has an announcement.
I have a case of news.
Okay.
Yesterday, we learned our S R three amount.
Mr. Concho, stand up.
Just to review and give you some suspense, S R one was one million, two hundred eighty-nine thousand, nine hundred forty-two dollars, about one point three. S R two was five million, one hundred eleven thousand dollars and seventy cents, five point one. S R three is eleven million, four hundred thirty-two thousand, two hundred fifty-seven dollars and seventy-two cents.
I think we can do the sex, Heather.
And.
We could do the sex.
Oh, and, and weatherization was approved at the high school with S F P.
Yay!
Good, good.
Do the dance.
Because now it's a, it's, it's preserving the building, cause they put, you know, it's exterior.
Right, yeah.
My son was painting those disgusting bathrooms and I had to hear about how the code made them on their hands and knees painting those bathrooms and he wanted to kill me.
It's gold color.
Uh, well, okay, just out of curiosity, we've painted the school colors at the different schools to.
Well, we had, but nobody liked my ideas, so we're gonna go back to the.
Well, no, I'm, okay. Battleship gray.
You don't want the gray.
I know. Gray isn't, I'm just gonna say.
Gray isn't, but when you start talking about prison.
But it depends on what kind of gray though. There's lots of demonstrated.
Remember, remember the under.
Would you say that there's?
Yeah, there is, but it's, no, no.
You don't understand, it starts as a dark gray and then over the years it fades out.
Can we, like Heather, I'm not, I'm being for real about this, cause this seems to be like a really important topic.
It is.
I think that we really need to like have like a.
We do.
Yeah.
But you also should, like when you're out and about, try to look at high schools and see what kind of, you know, like what they're doing.
Desert Ridge.
Just to look at, I think Desert Ridge just got painted and Skyline got painted.
I'm gonna take a tour and all go to the universe.
Desert Ridge is a very nice thing outside of school.
And Larry's been looking too, just to get some ideas. But we won't make, nobody's making an executive decision.
But you stock the colors that we had, okay.
I'm assuming S F P would have some kind of uh guidance on that at all?
They don't.
They don't know what.
You had to tell them.
They don't know what they usually do, huh?
No, you had to tell them.
He said, that's on you.
See, see, as big words.
You don't have like a design. Anything else? Okay, so I'm just gonna go over this, so item three point four, the discussion that we had on salaries will be on the agenda for action items.
Anything on there that's an action item will be on.
Three point, well, the whole budget will be on there.
Right, the salary discussion.
It'll be within that budget, yes.
It'll be recommendations.
Yeah.
For action items.
One, one, two, three, four.
The whole thing.
Well, not all three.
Well, whatever's on there that need to be.
Do the private daycare thing?
Yeah, that's gonna be approved.
Rifle?
Three point five, three point uh five, three point seven, three point eight, three point nine.
School resource not yet.
And three point ten.
Well, three point twelve has to be on there, right?
Uh, three point twelve, yes.
Yes.
And three point thirteen.
And three point thirteen.
Can I just throw one more monkey wrench in? Do you want to meet on the eighth at four because it probably won't be a long meeting on the eighth because there's no recognition? On the eighth?
Yeah, I thought we had.
It's six o'clock, isn't it?
You heard it.
The eighth is six o'clock.
So I'm saying, do you want to have a work session?
But we only had one meeting on that month.
Wait a minute.
Just because it probably won't be a long, you won't be here late, just if you wanted to have time to talk about different things.
You're talking July?
June.
June, June.
July?
That's your budget.
Just.
Presentation hearing and approval.
I have it at four o'clock.
Okay, I just want to make sure everybody.
I have a four o'clock.
Okay.
Yep, we have four and then regular meeting.
Wait a minute.
That's the one that Mr. Concho, remember?
That's the one I told you, yeah.
Okay. Cause we're only having one meeting.
Yeah.
Okay. And then for now, on July will be the same thing.
October, huh?
Yep.
It's in your schedule.
So it's gonna be from four to six is the work session?
Yeah, and then at six. We're gonna do five and six. So then we'll be.
Then July is.
So July thirteenth is the same six right now, but we're doing four, four.
Four, yeah.
And moving forward, they'll stay in here for the time being.
Might as well.
Okay. For the work session and the meetings?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you want us to do work sessions down here and then for the six o'clock, we go up there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But is that hard for you, cause you have to set up at two, two different places?
No, no, we're gonna do it all here.
Okay.
Do it all here and that way you, you end up getting, well, if we get a little lot of people.
So we're doing your presentation then.
We'll make it work. We'll just end like the work session.
I'll bring new Dr. Pepper next morning.
Exactly, you're good.
Okay, request for future agenda items, anybody?
School facilities board projects update.
Okay.
And uh, oh, I think this ties in with three point three, uh, it was supposed to be, if I remember correctly, oh, the fleet manager, what is his name? John?
Um, Howard, yeah.
Yeah. I think, wasn't there, I think he was gonna be talking to you, Dan, with regards to one or two buses that they were looking at possibly phasing out, getting rid of, but I don't know what the sentence is on that.